Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The night call, the tonight's meeting in order. Tonight's meeting has a tie to according to New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yeah.
Mr. Halderson.
Yeah.
Mr. Landrieu. Mr. Natale. Mr. Bibiak. Mr. Inberg. Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Alves.
Here. We have a couple of members missing, so I'll be sitting Mr. Gross in lieu and Mr. Inberg. Like I said, everyone, please rise and collect your flag.
Collecting your flag.
Thank you. Okay, I hope everyone had a good summer and we're going to be ready to continue the year until the new year. And everyone, a quick break. Madam Secretary, can I have approval of the minutes over July 24th? Can I have a few more?
No, next motion.
Motion from Mr. Halderson. Second from Mayor Gelli.
Halderson and Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
And Halderson.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Alves.
Yes. Any correspondence for tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, 4039. That's Melvin Flaherty down on Cedar Drive. I have a request for Larry Weinstein to carry till the night falls second meeting.
Okay. And the reason for that?
I can tell you the reason, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, because it's a variance for an undersized lot. We sent out notices and then we received correspondence from Larry Mendel on behalf of Suburban Agency, Mr. Krupnick, telling us that we didn't send buy cell letters. So we have now sent buy cell letters, both to Mr. Mendel. Purchasing his property actually would not help our nonconformity in any way, but we've sent him a buy cell letter. We've also, the rest of the property is owned by the Township of Lakewood, which is the reason we didn't send it in the first place. We sent a letter to the Township of Lakewood. We've sent a letter to Mr. Mendel on behalf of Suburban Agency and that's the reason we're asking for it to be carried.
Okay, fair enough. So can I have a motion to carry 4039? To when's the next meeting?
October 2nd.
October 2nd? Who is the waiver of appointment for the notice?
Yes.
Okay, who's that mayor, was that you? Mayor Gelli, and first and just being a second. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halderson.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Alves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other correspondence?
Yes. Hill number 4010, as county may or may not see.
Yes.
Mr. Gaddyback, you just requested this county to be up till the second meeting.
That's interpretation.
Yes, interpretation.
Okay, so we're going to carry this one as the one.
Just agreeing with the judge as he knew.
Something like that, that's important, right? Okay, so can I have a motion to carry 4010? Motion from Mr. Inberg. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ollie Gonzalez.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halderson.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Alves.
Yes. Okay, anything else?
Two more.
Two more.
4036. Not put on the agenda. It's counted line alliance. It's omitted. They can't get heard anyway. They're waiting for webinars and technical remarks they didn't submit, but they need to know.
Okay. That was yours, Mr. Pepper.
Yes.
Good evening.
Name, how are you? I went to look, I was preparing the file for this evening, looked at the agenda to see where I was on the agenda and it's not on there. I called Fran, Fran said it was an oversight, for some reason got deleted from the actual agenda and so I'm off the agenda. But I'm, we'll be back like October 2nd. So I want to confirm that no additional notices are necessary.
Do you have all the proper certifications that you're seeking?
Just to be clear, there was not an LOI, just some documentation which we will submit.
Did you send it to our engineer for review?
It will be.
10 days, probably.
Correct.
So let me make sure that what you're claiming is actually correct and you can tell us a little bit for review on the stories.
That is correct. I'm just asked that no further notice necessary.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Okay, fine, so the waiver of appointment for the notice?
Yes. And I assume we'll be continuing on old business because we'd already started this application. It's not a new application.
I understand, that's old business, that's correct.
It's not on the agenda at all, I just want to clarify.
It's not on the agenda, do you see any paperwork?
I'm not going to argue as to why it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to carry 4036?
Motion.
Motion from Mayor Gelli, second. Mr. Gross. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halderson.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Alves.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
4039. And 4042, mark press.
4042. Mark at the bottom, yes, okay.
October 2nd?
Yeah, and the reason?
There's no reason, I just had a letter request to.
Why? Why? Okay.
Well, there was a comment in the review letter that it didn't show the basement. So I'm sure the applicant was, wanted to Smith Plan showing the basement plus the last on the agenda, no way they're getting heard anyway.
I can understand that one admitted to the last on the agenda. Okay. So if anyone can have a motion to carry 4042? Motion from Mr. Inberg, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gelli.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halderson.
Yes.
Mr. Inberg. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Alves.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we're done?
There was 3940A, Joseph Weiss. Mr. Kachuba had written.
Old business going into the first thing on the agenda.
I thought that was correspondence.
Oh, correspondence, okay, you're right, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
Joe Kachuba had written the letter, Joe could not be here this night, so they asked me, the applicant's not here, it's a very simple matter. If you want to say the county required something different.
Okay, one more time, before you go into the next one. Brian, you know who your person? Okay, thank you.
It was approved with driveways like they normally are, separate driveways coming out. The county said they doesn't like, don't like that. So it's the same three buildings, instead of them being staggered, they're pushed back. No.
And Mr. Flannery, let's have your name too, just for the record, all right?
Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey.
Do you swear or affirm that's my truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. And this was an application that was approved by the board for three units. They were staggered with each having individual driveways coming out to Clover, it's a county road. The county said, "We don't want that. We want a, one entrance onto Clover," which does make more sense. Same number of parking spaces, same number of units, all the same variances, just slightly different configuration as shown on the two plans.
So the housing isn't changing?
Correct.
It's just that you're turning it into a parking lot instead of driveways?
Correct.
And there are approximately nine, four, eight, 12 spots?
12 spots. Both pictures, both plans had 12 spots. There's nine across the top and three at the bottom.
Nine across the top, I see that.
Three on the bottom.
There it is. You're coming over here. And this is going to be a public easement there? Home and association easement?
Yes.
He drains it and everything?
Same, yeah, same requirements that the board engineer and town engineer will have to approve.
Mr. Flannery, can you just explain what those two documents are?
A1, which is the one closest to me, is the plan that was approved. It shows the approved plan highlighting the three units and the parking facilities. A2 is the plan that was approved by the county planning board and it shows the three units and the parking facility, as I've explained. The difference is a parking facility, all the vehicles come out at the same point and that's what the county requires.
And what is that loop over there that you showed over there?
It's the edge of the pavement. It's for a vehicle to come in, they can park in the nine across the top, they can park in the three down the bottom.
So you have to create that loop?
Yes.
There's only one difference between this one and that one, is that there's absolutely no front yard, no garden in front, zero, zero. That's the only difference. Where you didn't have much of it in the other one either, but at least there was something in between them. How far was it in between those driveways?
Some of them, as you can see.
Can I see the blue line, please?
The board is familiar with the location of this, right next to the Housing Authority.
Yeah, I know. I know, that's where we gave, that's where we approved the three.
Right.
The three units in the first place, because it was a dense area. The Housing Authority knows that looks like a county house up there. The only issue that I see over here, that more or less looks like a parking lot with not much. Nothing, zero. So for that, I would just leave it up to my fellow board members.
And the applicant would have been happier to build the one that you approved, but the county has jurisdiction and the county said.
I understand.
Yeah.
Is it everything else space, will decide what is in there, is it space?
Yes.
Nothing else, the house is not up yet, right?
Correct.
If they didn't get a builder permit.
We need county approval and Mr. Kachuba went through that process.
So what's that choice, if you don't like this? Brian, could you put shrubbery in the whole?
Yes. We could, we could put as much shrubbery as would physically fit, subject to the approval of your engineer.
One second, if you turn this down, so why?
The applicant has a problem because the county isn't approving the other one. I think the location of it and by adding as much landscaping as physically fits, we can make the project look as well as the other one would.
Mr. Gelli, to answer your question, if you were to not grant the approval and the applicant is in a rock and a hard place because he has to get his own board approval and part of that approval is getting county planning board approval. So without getting the planning board approval, they're back here asking
And I can assure you.
If they satisfy the planning board and if he doesn't get either one, hopefully there's no approval.
And I can assure you, the county engineer's not going to change his mind.
Who's the applicant?
Joseph Weiss.
Quick question, I see here, one resolution? Two resolutions?
Well, it was done as a bifurcated application.
Two resolutions. Okay, so what's the third one? The third one is the extension?
The third one's an extension, Chair.
It was? That's a double A.
3940A.
That's the extension?
Correct.
Okay, fine. Okay.
Do you want to open it up to the public? I would open it up, Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Okay. So I'll open to the public. How many of the public have to say on 3940A, Joseph Weiss?
I'm sorry, you swear or affirm that's my truth?
I affirm, I just want to clarify what attorney just said, that they have to open up to the public because he's asking greater variances from the previous time.
No, no, that's not why. I'm doing it, I always do it under an abundance of caution because it's always good to have a public input. If I ask for any variances.
Okay, he is. And the setback in the back.
Same setback, that was approved.
It's the same setback.
No, over here, it's going down, so this didn't need a setback, only the first one. Now that he's pushing everything to the back, all three need setbacks.
There's one nuance, if you look at the plans, I don't think Brian talked about. If you look at the initial approved plan that they had, we staggered because of the proximity of what they show is about 181.03. That was a patio and not a deck. And the previously approved plans had decks on the other two lots. The front, the rear yard setback would have applied if it was a deck. If you look at the amended plans, all three of these properties are now patios. So the rear yard setback is now to the home and not to the.
So basically, and thank you for the answer. So basically what's going to happen is these three houses are coming back to the board for the decks.
Hopefully not.
In Lakewood, that's what happens.
There was a variance issue over here. You are going to decide that there's a variance issue over here, then we have a problem, this wasn't advertised?
No. If you look at the current plan. You have patios on. The patios do not require variances.
Correct.
Mr. Klein is saying is that there have been instances where people have done their own things and then come back and report their activity. But the board has to weigh all this, obviously.
Right.
The question is what is in the back of it, on the side, that if the township finds out or somebody snitches, if it comes back? Because if it's nothing in the back over there, most likely it won't come back. But it all depends who is next door to it. One thing I want to mention, this is a safety issue. I know the county only cares about their roads and therefore is, they made a better design accordingly to the Igress and Ingress, the going out from their roads, but now it becomes an issue with the sidewalks. As you know, before it was, everybody had their own driveway, so you could say, "Your kids are playing in the front." And my driveway, I make sure, the way I drive out, drive in, and make sure my kids don't get hit. Now you have a whole parking lot and this is a place where I am familiar with because I live in such a section and there's no sidewalks in front of the houses and this is dangerous. I'm talking, there's sidewalks on the street, but there's no sidewalks after the house before the big parking lot. So what happens is if somebody wants to tell us, "Kid, do not go off the sidewalk and there's nothing there," it's very hard to teach the kids and therefore is, it's a danger issue. I live in such a development where there is such a driveway access easement in front of the house and it's very dangerous. So if you're just approving something that is a danger to the occupants that is going to live there, and I know Brian is going to tell you that the occupants are going to agree to live with a danger for their children. But as you know, you know, kids might get injured or killed and whom are you going to blame? The occupant, that just somebody got killed on 7th Street? Did anybody, accused anybody? Yes, it was a dangerous driver and a kid ran through. So people agree to live there doesn't mean is that it's not danger. So I think this should be addressed by the board or by the applicant to make this thing safer. Thank you.
Brian, add. One second. Anyone else in the public want to be heard? Seeing none, we post to the public. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, one second.
Brian, I have a question for that. Back, doesn't, I don't see the, the, here's one, these steps going down onto patio?
Yes.
And it's going to be a double sliding door?
I haven't seen the architectural plans for it, it's going to be the same that was there before. We did have, the one unit was a patio, the same situation, so I understand the board's concern that somebody doesn't go and build a deck where they're supposed to have a patio. Certainly that can be a condition of the approval so that any, anybody buying understands that.
Brian, I have a question. The parking lot, is that going to be recessed or it's going to be round up so cars, are they going to hit a bump?
There would be curb around the parking lot.
So if you come out of the house and do some type of landing or?
Yeah, there'll be steps going down, a sidewalk and then step down.
Then it'll be recessed?
Yes. Correct. Correct. And I would also like to say that Mr. Klein thought I was going to say the kids know it, the people buying it know it's unsafe for their kids. I would disagree. If I lived in there, my kids would be playing in the backyard.
Well, you know, I understand the county backing out of that, of those.
Yes.
Dangerous on cars.
Well, the intent was to put some sort of back in facility, but the county, the county wants all the cars coming out at one point and they don't want as much backing around than. Yes, and I travel on that road and I'll be happy with that also. And then, and there are small areas that can be planted and the applicant will plant as much as is physically possible.
One other question. For our lawyer, so this is a common issue we're having with, you know, builders don't have to address that. Homeowners put it in at the seal. Can we add some language to the resolution here? Patio has to be in and floor, steps has to be in and patio has to be in.
And the testimony at that time was also that the builder told them that, "Just do it after you get your CIO."
Well, there should be, and the testimony was that we had, it was a two by four.
Well, we can include my position that the deck is not.
And have that back there after the function of the pressure, there's no planes, so you know, at least they have to pick up.
Brian, how big does this house? 28 by what? By 60?
As I indicated at the beginning, the applicant didn't get here, Mr. Kachuba, who was going to testify, may have known that answer. If the board could carry this to a later point in the evening, the applicant is coming and I'm not going to make his houses smaller without his permission.
I'll tell you what they were doing with that. The problem is that you're basically looking at a, at a front driveway, like the guy's house, on the apartment house. You know, even the houses there in the neighborhood that are more garden style apartments, and that's where you've proved it, but it's still lawn and grass and grounds all around the house.
You can see on the plan that the ones next, immediately next door don't have grass and the parking spaces go right up to it, it's a garden apartment style.
It's all, it's all, it's all, I know the neighborhood, it's all garden apartment. It is walkways and everything else is sort of.
And the new ones that were done by the Housing Authority?
They were just rebuilt.
The ones by the Housing Authority that were rebuilt, yes, they have more grass in front of them. These are not part of the Housing Authority, these, okay. So you ask, can they, will the applicant make it smaller? If you could carry it to a later time in the, in the meeting, when the applicant comes, I'll ask him that question, he can answer.
And then, and I'll be okay, I'll be okay, I'll hear Mr. White, will the applicant show up for the letter? What? Okay, so.
Thank you.
The way this looks now, it's just. Okay. I'm going to go jump over, I dropped, I just got out of line because we only have six members and I'm sure Hill number 4029, Rick Mazatara, is not going to want to be heard with six members and Uli LaRiva is on his way over, so we'll wait for him to come to, so we'll have a pool for it for that one. So that's the case, I'm just going to go then to the next one, 4037A, Zama Rosenberg. Here?
Yes.
Yes.
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Fran, you normally read them first?
My apologies.
This is an application for a deck. If the board remembers and it seems like they do because we talked about it a few minutes ago. This is the one where the builder put the double sliding glass doors and put boards across it and said, "I give you credit" and. So as indicated in Terry's report, this was a, an application before the board that was denied and the applicant has come back with a different application. The application that was before the board was into the shade tree utility easement and it was 36 inches above the grade. They had a sookah structure on it so you could see it going by from the road. The new plan is for a 14 by 15 deck, a smaller deck and 18 inches above grade, so it would be similar to what a raised patio could be. And it's out of the shade tree and utility easement. The board also remembers there was an application on the lot immediately adjoining that was approved and that one was 18 inches above grade and I think the board found that the two were different applications. This is a, you know, the applicant bought a home, moved in, they were misled by their builder. They built a deck that, that didn't fit by the board's standards. They understand that the board makes that decision. Now they're back here asking the board for approval to build a deck that would be similar to a raised patio, which is allowed by ordinance. And, and it would be consistent with the one next door. I'm sure the board is familiar with these sites because I know you guys live in town and go. about the master plan that would preclude this. Actually, if you look at the history of land use, the decks were permitted in setbacks up until a couple of years ago, and the reasoning for the change in the ordinance was that people were building the decks too close to the property line, and emergency services couldn't get there. This won't present any of that problem. If people had been building decks 18 inches high, they'd still be permitted, but what happened in Lakewood was that people took advantage of it, and they built them too high and too wide, and it created a problem, and it was a backlash, and these people are suffering from that backlash. So the only thing we have in the Lakewood master plan of 2007 is to encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth. And it's my testimony, this is smart growth. Under the municipal land use law, NJAC 40:55D2, the purpose of the Act encourages municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare. And it certainly will promote the safety of the residents here. Their children will have a deck to play on. Due to the basement configuration that's already there with the windows, the raised deck doesn't work now. The builder kind of precluded that. The builder really boxed them into a corner with what he built. So for a C2 variance, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. And clearly, we have this. It's a piece of property that's already built. It's next to a home that has a deck. It backs up to a road where it's got a fence that blocks it, so it doesn't create any of the safety or access issues for emergency personnel. We have to show that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced, and that's what I read, 40:55D2. We have to show that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And this is how it affects the adjoining property owners. And at the last meeting, when it was higher and into the shade tree easement, no property owners came out and said, "Hey, that's going to bother us." So I'm assuming that we're not going to have any neighbors that are going to say this is a problem. The neighbors are all fine with it. We actually had testimony at the last meeting that most people build decks illegally, and these people are like those speeders that are doing 70 on the parkway and get pulled over and get a ticket, because they are breaking the law. And then we have to show that the benefits outweigh the detriments. And my testimony is because of the fence and because of location, there's no detriment, and the benefits are that the family enjoys the use of their yard, and, you know, it's a specific type of house that's in a dense area. It's in an area that has similar houses, and it's my testimony that will fit in, and the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So this is such a de minimis case that I'm respectfully requesting that you grant the request of the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, there's two things. As the board is aware, the applicant is here, mortgage fee as well, part of the application for a deck. The new planner is, but testimony on the record, the applicant has changed the application in terms of size, the location of the deck is a substantially different application. So in my opinion, there's no pressure to that issue, so it is a, has to be an application for the board. Mr. Flannery, there are two exhibits there. Can you explain what they are?
A1 is the tax map with the subject property shown in orange. A2 is the plan prepared by New Lines, showing the unit and the deck.
Can I get a date on both of those, if you don't mind, please?
Well, the tax map is the current tax map or the statute website, and the New Lines plan is revised through August 1st.
Thank you.
Okay. In reference to your panel, I think I would like this, I would want to rehearse to concur with our attorney in the form of, okay, we got to...
I would never dispute my attorney.
Even though I have a piece of paper, I nameplate. Yeah, if you can't trust that, I know what you're getting at.
Okay, so if anyone has any questions about that, please, let's speak up, or I'll be moving forward. Okay. All right. So we'll accept what I would write, and we'll deliver to your panel on this application. Now, so we're looking at this, how high or how low do you propose to put it?
Well, it's going to be 18 inches above grade, which would be similar to what you could do with a raised patio.
What is the lowest you can go, and that's the only...
Well, the 18 inches really is the lowest you can go, because you have your framing members that are two-by-10s, and you have to get something underneath it holding it off the ground, so it's not sitting on the dirt for structural and maintenance purposes. So 18 inches really is the lowest you can go.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Do you want to do this whole thing in the last application? I'm sure I want to do the rest of the room.
How high is the deck right now?
36 inches. So we'll be taking it down a foot and a half.
And what is the hardship when you just put it in?
The house, the way it was built, has windows, so in order to put the patio, you've got to put dirt right up to the house, and you box the windows.
Are you going to make the few steps going down, or are you going to go up?
Well, you could make the few steps going down, but the patio, as opposed to the deck, the deck has air underneath it, so there's, it's open. The patio, if you did the patio the same height, you're going to be putting extra dirt up against the foundation. You're going to be creating a load on the foundation. Patios aren't as good for the children as far as playing on them, and from the municipal land use law, we have to show the benefits outweigh the detriments, and I don't think there's a detriment to a deck versus a patio. I don't think we would even be having this conversation, because the decks would still be in there if people only built their decks 18 inches high.
And is there a difference in...
No, we would build the same, you could, you could build the same-sized deck.
It's normally...
Yeah. Oh, no, from the original one, it's shorter. The original one was in the shade tree utility easement. The one that's next door was approved in the shade tree utility easement. This one, they pulled it back out of the shade tree easement.
How many pieces there? Can I have a copy?
Ryan, you had mentioned that you believe that that would conform with smart growth principles, if you understand.
Well, I didn't say it would conform with the smart growth plan. I said it was in accordance with smart growth principles. And smart growth principles are this compact type of design and having a deck for the family to enjoy in the back. It's a bit of a stretch, but when you look at, on the detriment side, I don't see any detriment.
Well, just the history of this case, which really downed the detriment, in terms of encouraging builders to pass the law, we can find a way down. It's not that it's back in the front.
I think that the builders that did it, and if it was the builder that was here, I think it would be appropriate to punish him. I think the homeowners that here, you know, homeowners and taxpayers, families that are living in our town, I think we should look at the benefits versus the detriment, and I think the board did send a message to builders, and there aren't a lot of secrets in Lakewood. I think people heard that you can't just ignore the rules and regulations, and if you go to the zoning board, expect them to approve everything. You denied two decks, and the two decks that you denied, well, you denied one deck here, you also denied a deck another time. So everybody knows you deny decks if they're too big and too high, and that's the first deck that you denied was also too high. When you denied this, it was too high. So if a deck looks like a patio, the people will know, you come to the board, you ask for it. If the board agrees, you can build it, and they'll see that the board is agreeable, and the board has compassion and doesn't want to punish a family for something that a builder did.
I understand what you're saying. It's just, I have one, one period of the next to the patio there, as soon as there's low end and everything, and the fence, top of the fence to the deck, if you lower than the fence that's on the property, from the property, so you don't see it.
There's...
As long as you can keep that, keep that shade gate to the fence.
Yes.
If the fence of the deck is lower than the fence of the property, like we should align right up there.
And I think that would be...
That's why I'm saying, if you're doing below...
I think that would be a good condition to put in the approval, that the railing is lower than the elevation of the deck, because this only being 18 inches doesn't even require a railing. The railing only comes in in the building code, but I don't think you want to have a family that has no railing. But they can do a two-foot railing, and it looks to me by eyeball that the top of the fence is a good three and a half feet above where the 18...
That's what you're saying, come down as low as it can, you know? I'm sure you heard that at 18 inches.
Well, if, if the resolution were to state that the maximum height of the deck could be 18 inches, and that the height of the railing would have to be below the height of the fence, then it would accomplish what my testimony was, that there's no detriment, and it would give the homeowners the ability to make the deck that works best for their kids.
One second, please.
I have just mixed up, we're talking about railings, so my question is a question I just kind of want to... Definitely, I don't have a sense of...
Yes, yes, yes.
I let it keep it up a little. I think the applicant came towards that, based on what we told him.
Yes, yes.
But I'm trying, what I'm trying to accomplish is to get as low as possible, you know, 15 inches, 13 inches, 18 inches, whatever people's lowest, what's happening is the next direction, I mean, the next direction. I wouldn't say that. Okay. Let me open to the public. Anyone in the public wants to be heard on 4037A? Can you step up? Quick announcement that if you use that, I did that, the public, I want to get this through the four-minute rule, so tonight, all applicants, we will be hearing the four-minute rule.
Can you confirm that you don't think this is how true it's going to be? What would you name for the record to say, although we all know who you are?
Schlemmer Klein. Last time I was here, I had some very negative comments. And interestingly enough, the four-minute rule was instituted on this application that I gave very negative comments last time. I'm just mentioning this. Sorry, you're treating the public like a nuisance. When you don't like what the public is saying, you have a way of limiting the public to speak, even though I don't usually go over the three to four minutes. As far as this application, we have in this township, they cut down a whole forest without permits, the Chemet property. Township found out about it. People were complaining. They didn't even send down the inspection department. They sent out the Department of Public Works. What I'm trying to bring out, because they didn't want any violations, I'm trying to bring out the big guys getting away with what they're doing, and the little guys are suffering. And I couldn't, this is the only time that we agree, Mr. Flannery, even though I never got paid, he's blaming the developers. The developers did something very wrong, and the end user is suffering. We all agree that the people should have decks, and we shouldn't get penalized, and if they were told by the developer lies, what they're constantly being told, the developers not only lie to the people, they lie to the boards too. That's what they do. That's what developers do. They lie for their money, and they do other stuff with their money too. So, again, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Flannery claiming is that this is the developer problem, that the developer is the one that is guilty over here, and I think it's the board's job to make sure that the developer doesn't get away, there was a suggestion by the previous application, how we should deal with it, or to bring it up to the attention of the master plan or the township committee to do something with their ordinance that these type of actions shouldn't happen. That means we should have setbacks enough that if people want to make deck, place decks, and they don't come approval for decks, or make that no house should be approved without a deck. But to say people shouldn't have decks because the developers are a bunch of blood-suckers, hungry people, I think it's wrong, and I think, you know, you have a lot of people over there that came to support this applicant, and I think that to penalize the end user is a little bit wrong. Did I go over the four minutes? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you step up? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Okay, guys, can I have a motion or a comment, and start with anything you want to do.
All right. The motion is...
I have a motion from Mary Gelling between the application. Can I have a second on that?
I'll say.
Second, Halabas, can I have a second there?
Mr. Gelling?
Yes.
Halabas?
Yes.
Mr. Eber?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Alan?
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, I see Uder Jan is here, so we can go back to our standard calendar. Next application up is Kangech Malasapura. Before I go to Kangech Malasapura, can I speak for a second?
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to do that one.
Okay.
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 Thank you. Anyone else? Can you step up? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Okay, guys, can I have a motion or a comment and start with anyone who does it? I have a motion from Mary Gelling through the application. Can I have a second on that?
I'll say.
Second, Hal Halberson.
Mr. Gelling?
Yes.
Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Eber?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, I see Udrer Dan is here, so we can go back to our standard Next application up is Kangech Malasapura. Before I go to Kangech Malasapura, can I squeeze for a second?
Suddenly.
Okay. Can you plug in a little bit? I'm not going to do Malasapura right now. I am doing an application, I'm going to go way out of line and way out of order, which I normally never do, but under certain circumstances that I see here tonight in front of me, I can only be right to the fore to go way out of line. I'm doing an application, 4043. I am Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do appreciate that. On behalf of Rabbi and Mrs. Jacobs sitting over here, I think it's difficult for them to just sit here all night till the end of the agenda.
And we're going to do it according to schedule 90, we cannot even get--
Right. I would just feel terrible for them to have to come back.
Mr. Chairman, you ready?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Miriam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Chaim and Chani Jacobs. We are here tonight on behalf of a family who really has to be commended. The Jacobs have taken in both Mr. Jacobs' parents, who you see right in front of me right over here, Rabbi and Mrs. Jacobs, as well as Mrs. Jacobs' mother. Mrs. Jacobs' mother is more mobile and hence she lives in the existing basement area. However, the Jacobs' grandparents have been living with them, the grandparents that you see in front of you have been living with them now for three years and they do not have space of their own. Mr. Jacobs often sleeps sitting at the kitchen table since he doesn't have a bedroom that he can access. He can't possibly get upstairs, you see him in front of you, and he can't get upstairs to the bedrooms. He also has no access to a shower, since the only shower is upstairs. Mrs. Jacobs has been sharing a bedroom with her now 12-year-old grandson for the last three years. We are here this evening to request a two-story addition to the basement and first floor with a wheelchair lift to accommodate the older Jacobs. The addition will provide a kitchenette and rooms for the older Jacobs to have their own space, but yet this space will be part of the house and open to the house, so it can never be rented out to a family outside of their own. There will be no tenants in the house, it is all for the Jacobs' family. As I indicated earlier, the existing basement is being occupied by Mrs. Jacobs' mother. The Jacobs have 10 children of their own besides housing the parents and mother-in-law. While there are a number of variances, many of them are existing conditions that were granted at the time that this townhouse development was approved in 1992. Probably the most significant variance is for a side yard setback of 5.9 feet. Now, I know that sounds terrible, but I do want to point out that for those of you who know the area, this setback abuts a property that has been converted to a basketball court and a park on private way by the Kalter family and hence will not affect or impact any houses or families living there. Without further ado, I'd like to quote from Brian Flannery and ask to have him sworn. Brian, ready?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I have four exhibits. A1 is the approved site plan that was approved a long time ago and the subject property is highlighted in orange. It was done by James N. Donahue dated 2492. The second exhibit is the tax map, 2492, by James Donahue. The A2 is the tax map showing where the property is. It's off Forest Avenue, Third comes right into the development. A3 is an aerial exhibit showing where the property is, the property is highlighted in pink and you can see the basketball court adjoining where the addition would go, as Ms. Weinstein testified. And A4 is the plan that was submitted, showing the addition off to the side where we are requesting the side yard variance at, it's a 13.75-foot extension off the side and that's where we need a variance. One of the comments in Terry's report was second-floor plans. I have copies of second-floor plans. We weren't changing anything, that's why it wasn't shown, if the board is interested.
So that's just the existing second story of the townhouse back from when it was built, 15, 20 years ago.
Does the client need a copy of those plans before entering?
There should be an extra copy there.
No.
That's correct.
No, and just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, when I said it was a two-story addition, it's the basement and the first floor, the second floor is not being touched at all.
The--
There is an addition to the basement. There is an addition to the basement. No, I said the second floor is not being touched at all. Yeah, the basement is, there's going to be, there's a two-story addition, which Brian will get to. Okay. Terry, other question?
How many parking spaces are allocated to this unit?
This was approved back in the 90s and at the time of the approval, the requirement was one and a half parking spaces per unit. That's what was approved and that's what exists. They're not designated parking spaces, but for each unit, there's one and a half parking spaces. It's a facility that's been there for a long time. The applicant's parents have lived there for three years, they're not going to be bringing any vehicles, so it's a situation that's not going to change. Per the original approval, this complies because the original approval wasn't based on bedrooms. The ordinance has been changed since that it goes by bedrooms. If you went by bedrooms, it doesn't work, but if you're looking at this as an amended application to just add a, an addition to the side of the building, it complies with the original site plan as approved.
So technically, you need parking relief and the justification is the nature of the home, you're not going to have multiple families with multiple cars.
Well, my testimony would be that this was approved with a one and a half per unit and we're doing a, making a de minimis change to that site plan, so I would go with the same parking requirement. If the board were to, in an abundance of portions, say that we need to comply with a number of parking spaces for bedrooms and we need another parking space, then my testimony would be that it's a C2 variance and the justification is that due to the nature of the addition, there's no additional parking demand that's going to be required and the board should grant the variance.
Mr. Chairman, in the hearing, what Terry comments are to Washington, I believe, it doesn't apply to that and the board should take that into consideration and we want to act, maybe we can grant that full for the variance that that's part of the board, but that should be included as part of this application.
Or are you just stating--
So the existing dwelling is a two-story structure with a basement. The first floor and the basement are 1,161 square feet and the second story is 1,124 square feet. So it's a small unit to begin with and you've got to really give congratulations to the applicant that they would take their parents on. As I get older, I don't know that any of my kids would take me in and it's something that we all pray that we've treated our kids nice enough when they were younger, that they'll take us in when we need to be taken in.
And again, they took in the parents and, both sets of parents. Mrs. Jacobs' mother lives there too, she's not here tonight, but she lives there as well, so--
So what we're asking for on addition is a basement addition of 924 square feet and a first-floor addition of 924 square feet and as Miriam indicated, there's no second floor on the addition. The addition, as you can see on all of the exhibits, the variance relief that's required is to the west and to the west is where the basketball court is, which shows up most clearly on A3.
He's coming.
And we did submit as requested a letter from the homeowners association, yes, and the president of the board is here also and the neighbors--
Mr. Chairman, the neighbor's on his way, we took this out of order, we had told him to come later. He's on his way, he'll be here before we finish.
I just want to make sure that the neighbor's okay with it.
Yeah, 100%. That's why we told him to come.
You know, we didn't see and they were--
Yes.
But I see the letters from the homeowners association that the homeowners association itself has no problem with this.
So going to Terry's report on page two with respect to waivers, the property's in the ROP zone, the ROP zone does allow multifamily in accordance with the RM. The townhomes are permitted use in the zone. He lists in item two, the existing bulk variances and he lists the lot area requirements and lot widths for the ROP zone, which are more typically for an office-type use in that zone. But when you go to the RM, which is permitted in the RM zone, you're allowed to have townhouses and the individual lots, which is what this is. This is an individual unit in that townhouse, so the numbers of the existing variances really aren't applicable to the application that's before you. The exist, the lot area 10,000 is required, 3,802 square feet are divided, lot width of 45 feet is existing and 75 feet are required and front setback of 7.9 feet where 25 are required. And that's a front setback to the existing parking. This was approved when it was adopted and we had the resolution from that. And when it was adopted, the only relief that was required was the 25-foot front setback from Forest where a 30-foot front setback is required. Then Terry lists the new bulk variance relief that's required and the side yard setback is the one that we're, that's really out there that we agree--
Neighbor's here.
And the neighbor's here, so the neighbor will be able to tell you. And that's to the west of the property and it only impacts that one neighbor. And 12 feet is required, we have 5.9 feet and the reason we did that is to make reasonable accommodations so that his parents will have a normal place to reside.
I have one question. If we push them to shut, I think you should do it. If we push them to shut, they're way too squeezed in. One more smart spot or it's impossible.
It's impossible, it's impossible. As a practical matter, the people make more parking spaces than what are depicted and the parking works. It's, you know that area, it's the Shiva area, there's--
Mr. Chairman, we're not adding any occupants. They all live there and they don't drive. Okay, we can't.
Okay, so that's the new setbacks, is the side yard of 5.9. Building coverage, 55.4 is proposed, but that's proposed for this unit. If you look at the entire property, the overall tract is 85,000 square feet. When it was approved, it was allowed 30% and my testimony would be that the current ordinance under RM for townhouses would also allow 30% and they only have 27.4%, so this 1,100-square-foot addition doesn't kick you over that. If you look at just the lot, and this is a difficult application to look at because it's 20 years after it happened and we're putting an addition on it, if you look at it, then the variance that would be required is 55% where 25% is allowed. It sounds horrible, if you look at the exhibits, it's not. And the third one that Terry--
55% is not on the overall lot.
No.
Is that not the overall--
No, on the overall--
Is that not this?
Yes, on the overall lot, including this, we're at 28.7%, which is, yes, which is low by, which is low by liquid standards. Yes.
55.4 versus 25.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, that's what I said when you weren't listening. Well, you don't have to listen because you know what I'm going to say. So then the other variance relief is what Terry indicated with respect to parking. If you look at this, we're adding a couple bedrooms, we need another parking space, there's no room for it and there's no need for it. So justification for the variances, you know, the municipal land use law, NJAC 40,55D2, under the purpose of the act, is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estate in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony, this does all of that. For a C2 variance, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property, which this clearly does, that this is a very unique application. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which my testimony is that they are. Variance could be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good and the neighbors will be here and you'll hear that. The benefits outweigh the detriments, the benefits are clear. People need a normal place to stay and there are no detriments and the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the most master plan and obviously the de minimis nature of this, that is my testimony.
So is this tenement, is this next one for a rent CO and I raised it?
No, correct.
No rental CO and I raised it. Never ever and I raised it. The way the addition was structured, it is part of the house, it will never be able to be rented as a separate unit. I did say that before and I can put up-- I will put the applicant up to the stands. He's sitting, they're sitting right here and--
I just want to hear the next--
Okay. Do you want to hear though from the chairman of the--
No, I'm below, that's fine.
Okay, so you can go. He's here and he's here if you want to hear from him, I just want to let him go and then we'll bring up the Kalter. Great. Just, you have to be affirmed first.
Okay, fine.
Chris, can we get Rebbe Kalter affirmed?
Can you raise your hand please, sir? If you affirm, testify, and present it to the board? And I just need your name, you just say yes. And now I need your name, sir. Arieh Kalter. Thank you. A-R-Y-E-H-K-A-L-T-E-R.
Where does he live?
I live 221 Private Way, that's in, behind it, I don't know.
Who lives next door, not behind the private way?
Oh, next door?
Next door. Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
He's the one, they're the ones that are most affected. The addition is on the side, next door, on which side are we asking before we-- He lives behind.
I live behind.
I know, I know, I want to get to that in a minute.
Okay, sure.
I want to get to that in a minute, but I'm more concerned.
Okay, let's start, well, he's been affirmed, so why don't we, why don't we speak to him? He lives behind--
Do you just need his address?
Absolutely.
221 Private Way. Thank you. That's like back.
So you live right behind this piece of property, right?
Right.
Lot 51 is your basketball court? Did I say that correct?
I don't know the lot numbers. The lot 51--
I'm looking, I'm looking, hold on.
Look at the bottom one, the bottom one, right along, right, right hand corner.
Basketball court, hold on one second.
No, 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 right, the corner, the corner, there it is.
Yeah, basketball court is 51, yeah.
Yes.
Basketball court is right here.
Where do I--
No, here.
Yes.
We're here, they're there.
That's the basketball court, correct?
Okay, here's the basketball court, right, Rebecca? This is the basketball court right here and you are--
221 Private Way.
Is it this one? You know which lot you are?
Closer to Second Street.
Closer to Second, should be, closer to Second is here. 7.02, he's got 7.02.
That's where I live, yeah.
Yes, adjacent to the basketball court, closer to Second Street.
Jason, this one right here, 7.02. So you're the one that's going to be mostly affected because of 901, is that, I believe, it was on Calter House?
Yes.
The other side of the basketball court?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, they're not affected by this.
Right.
So you're the only ones affected by the front half, by the front corner and the basketball court, and you have no problem with this addition?
Absolutely no objections, no.
Okay, I sort of want to make sure that you have no objection.
No.
I want to get that, you know, and everything that--
No problem.
And everything that-- I'm all because of that. Now, who lives on--
Okay, you're dismissed.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Who lives on lot 116?
Um--
On the other side, the right side of the house.
Their name is Goldbaum. They are not--
Is he here?
No, we did not ask him to come, he got a notice and he would have been here if he had an objection. I mean, if you really wanted him to come, we can ask him to come.
I know that, but you know, we've had plenty--
He's not, the reason we, the reason we didn't ask him specifically to come is because the addition is on the other side from him, he's not really affected.
I wanted to make sure that he's not, that he doesn't, the backyard where this addition juts out into right to the deck, that he's not going to have a problem the way this is designed.
He surely knows about it, he was definitely received a notice.
I understand, I understand that. I just want to make sure, I don't want to find out later, the foundation goes in and he says, "Well, I didn't realize, this is not what I thought, this is not what I understood."
And the president of the HOA--
Was here.
Was here and he would have, he would have said that and he wouldn't have written a letter if--
I--
These are neighbors that have been there for a while, they know each other.
Mr. Chairman, but, Mr. Chairman, the senior Jacobs have been living in this house for three years, the neighbors all know them.
I know, I'm trying to--
I understand.
Avoid issues. If this does get approved, I don't want to hear later that--
Understood. I totally understand. I apologize, I specifically--
If I want to say something.
I specifically, one second, I specifically called down Rebbe Kalter because I knew that you're going to ask that because he's the most affected by it. We have a side yard setback of five point, whatever it is feet, so we brought him down. The reason we didn't specifically reach out to the Goldbaums is simply because the addition doesn't really affect them that much, it's on the other side, they clearly know about it.
And the applicant wants to say that he can call him and have him come down, I don't think we need--
Do you want to speak?
Do you want to speak? Okay, could you want, can we, let's have him affirmed, he'd like to speak.
Do you affirm, just like you just said, to the board?
Yes.
Can I ask your name, sir?
Chaim Jacobs. I want to assure the board that before even thinking and undertaking this project, I spoke to my immediate neighbor, the Goldbaums, I asked them, "Is there any problem with it?" And they said, "Definitely not." I reached out to the Kalters on the other side, because they're also affected by it somewhat, and they said, "We'll even write you a letter if you'd like," which didn't seem to be necessary. He came to say, "So both my neighbors have their best wishes and approval."
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, let's move forward.
Yeah, this one is confirmed, I think, Brian, on the plan, it shows an elevation 65.5. Can you explain the two, that side on the--
The plan should have shown a sidewalk going to that, that's a slab at grave. If you look on the architectural plans, because I had the same question, you walk right in and there's a landing and then you can get on the elevator and either go to the first floor or to the basement. So that's a--
The floor is, it's like a door, an opening?
That's an opening, that's a slab, a concrete slab on the side. The plan should have shown a sidewalk coming from the front to that so that you can go on your wheelchair or walk, get to there, the door opens, you go on the landing and then you can take stairs up or you can get on the chairlift to go up or down.
Now, is there going to be a sidewalk coming on, will be a sidewalk on the actual side yard setback?
Yes, there'll be a sidewalk, there'll be a sidewalk from the front of the house in the side yard setback. Yes.
Okay. I don't, the public, any criticism?
I see that the bedrooms towards apartment in the basement and instead of the first floor, which typically is now the apartment for people who are elderly or disabled, is to get up to the first floor than to go down to the basement. Why does that come? It looks like, the way it looks like, I'm saying this one, the way it looks like, it looks like--
Here is one upstairs. The bedroom is actually on the main floor, there's an additional room downstairs together with the kitchenette and that's just-- They're sitting right here and-
I just want to hear the next one.
Okay. Do you want to hear, though, from the chairman of the-
No, I'm below that. That's fine.
Okay, so you can go. He's here? And he's here if you want to hear from him, I just want to let him go and then we'll bring up the call to him. Great. You have to be affirmed first.
Okay, fine.
Chris, can we get Rebecca Kalter affirmed?
Okay.
Can you raise your hand, please, sir?
Affirmed?
That you affirm, testify, and present the status of the board? And I just think your name's- You just say yes.
Yes.
And now you'd your name, sir.
Arie Kalter.
Thank you.
Where does he live?
I live 221 Private Way. That's in behind it. I don't know.
Who lives next door? Not behind the private way.
Oh, next door?
Next door. Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know.
He's the one, they're the ones that are most affected. The addition is on the side. Next door, on which side are we asking before we- He lives behind.
I live behind.
I know, I know. I want to get to that in a minute.
Okay, sure.
I want to get to that in a minute, but I'm more concerned.
Okay, let's start. Well, he's been affirmed, so why don't we speak to him? He lives behind.
Does he just need his address?
Absolutely.
221 Private Way.
Thank you.
That's like back.
So you live right behind this piece of property, right?
Right.
Lot 51 is your basketball court? Did I say that correct?
I don't know the lot numbers. The lot 51-
I'm looking, I'm looking. Hold on.
Look in the bottom line, on the bottom one. Right along. Right, right hand corner.
Basketball court, hold on one second.
No, 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 no. Right, the corner, the corner. There it is.
Yeah, basketball court is 51, yeah. Basketball court is right here.
Where do I-
No, here.
Yes.
We're here, they're there.
That's the basketball court, correct?
Okay, here's the basketball court, right? Rebecca, this is the basketball court right here and you are?
221 Private Way.
This one? Is it this one? Which lot you are?
Closer to Second Street.
Closer to Second, should be closer to Second is here. 7.02. He's got 7.02.
7.02.
That's where I live, yeah.
Yes, adjacent to the basketball court, closer to Second Street.
Jason, this one right here. 7.02. So you're the one that's going to be mostly affected because of Lot 01, is I believe it's also a counterhouse?
Yes.
The other side of the basketball court?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, they're not affected by this.
All right.
So you're the only ones who are affected by the front half, by the front corner and the basketball court. And you have no problem with this addition?
Absolutely no objections, no.
Okay. I sort of want to make sure that you have no objection.
No.
I want to know later that you know and everything that-
No problem.
And everything that's whole before that. Who lives on-
Okay, you're dismissed.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Who lives on Lot 116?
Um, who's it?
The other side, the right side of the house.
Her name is Goldbaum. They are not-
Is he here?
No, we did not ask him to come. He got a notice and he would have been here if he had an objection. I mean, if you really wanted him to come, we can ask him to come.
I know that, but you know, we've had plenty of-
He's not, the reason we didn't ask him specifically to come is because the addition is on the other side from him. He's not really affected.
I wanted to make sure that he doesn't, the backyard where this addition juts out into right to the deck, that he's not going to have a problem the way this is designed.
He surely knows about it. He was definitely received a notice.
I understand that. I understand that. I just want to make sure. I don't want to find out later, the foundation goes in and he says, "Well, I didn't realize it didn't, it's not what I thought, it's not what I understood."
And the president of the HOA-
Was here.
Was here and he would have said that. And he wouldn't have written a letter if, these are neighbors that have been there for a while.
Mr. Chairman, but Mr. Chairman, the senior Jacobs have been living in this house for three years. The neighbors all know them.
I know, I'm trying to-
I understand.
Avoid issues. If this does get approved, I don't want to hear later that-
Understood. I totally understand. I apologize. I specifically-
If I want to say something.
I specifically, one second.
What he wants to say is-
I specifically called down Rebecca Kalter because I knew that you're going to ask that because he's the most affected by it. We have a side yard setback of five point, whatever it is, feet. So we brought him down. The reason we didn't specifically reach out to the Goldbaums is simply because the addition doesn't really affect them that much. It's on the other side. They clearly know about it.
And the applicant wants to say that he can call him and have him come down. I don't think we need-
Do you want to speak?
Do you want to speak? Okay. Can you want, can we, let's have him affirmed. He'd like to speak.
Do you affirm, just like you just said, to the board?
Yes.
May I say your name, sir?
Chaim Jacobs. I want to assure the board that before even thinking and undertaking this project, I spoke to my immediate neighbor, the Goldbaums. I asked them, "Is there any problem with it?" And they said, "Definitely not." And I reached out to the Kalters on the other side because they're also affected by it somewhat. And they said, "We'll even write you a letter if you'd like," which didn't seem to be necessary. He came to say, "So both my neighbors have their best wishes and approval."
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, let's move forward. Um, for your question of these people-
This one has confirmed one thing, Brian. On the plans, it shows an elevation 65 to 58. Can you explain the two left side on the-
The plan should have shown a sidewalk going to that. That's a slab at grade. If you look on the architectural plans, because I had the same question, you walk right in and there's a landing, and then you can get on the elevator and either go to the first floor or to the basement. So that's a-
The floor is just like a door, an opening?
That's an opening. That's a slab, a concrete slab on the side. The plan should have shown a sidewalk coming from the front to that so that you can go on your wheelchair or walk, get to there, the door opens, you go on the landing, and then you can take stairs up or you can get on the chairlift to go up or down.
Now, is there going to be a sidewalk coming on the, will be a sidewalk on the actual side yard setback?
Yes, there'll be a sidewalk. There'll be a sidewalk from the front of the house in the side yard setback. Yes.
Okay. I don't wish public any criticism.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I see that the bedrooms for the apartment in the basement and instead of the first floor, which typically is now the apartment for people with elderly, disabled, to get up to the first floor than to go down to the basement. Why does that come? It looks like, the way it looks like, I'm saying this one did, the way it looks like, it looks like-
Here is one upstairs. The bedroom is actually on the main floor. There's an additional room downstairs together with a kitchenette, and that's just if a grandchild wants to come visit. If you look on the first floor, there's a bedroom right next to home office. That's just if a grandchild wants to come visit. I mean, to be honest with you, as it stands right now, the grandchildren can't even come visit them because there's just no space and it was literally in the middle of their house. If a grandchild comes to visit, they want to have an extra room in the basement. They're going to be living in that bedroom right off the home office on the first floor.
So why is there a kitchenette in the basement? Second. Because now there's a kitchenette and now you have your second kitchenette.
Well, the existing kitchenette in the basement is for Mrs. Jacobs' mother.
So what's the point of the second kitchenette?
You know what? Why don't we let the applicant answer it? He can answer better than we can.
My parents, my parents are living by me for close to four years. My mother doesn't have any space for herself. She shares a bedroom with a 12-year-old. When she came, he was just eight and now she's 12. She's living in boxes, we give her much room. My father has his clothing in the front coat closet. My father's handicapped, he can't get into the bathroom, he has to take his walker. I'm sorry to say, he has absolutely no bathing facilities. My mother has no space. We're trying to provide them a little dignity, a little space. My mother wants to cook something and she has to, well, she basically has to share a stove with her daughter-in-law. They get on beautifully. It's credit to my wife, it's credit to my mother. They're both exceptional people. But you understand what it means. You're people who lived your whole life independently. You're moving into your children. You're not self-sufficient. You don't have a place that you call your own. What we're trying to do is give them a little dignity, a little space, a little family room, a little room downstairs so they can put some toys for kids to come visit. All my parents' stuff is in storage because they're in limbo for the last close to four years. If a lady has a little place where she can, the kitchenette, you'll notice is not usable. It's just a little between the bathroom, a handicapped bathroom, in case my father, he should be well for many years, but let's say he needs an aide. So we need a bedroom in the basement for an aide. We need a handicapped bathroom in case he needs to be in the bedroom in the basement so he can have 24 hours an aide living in the house. We're just doing the basics, a little bit to the future and viewing possibilities and trying to make it livable and doable for them. We're not, we have no intentions, it was opened very clearly to the house. There's a dining room that opens up to the main entrance, I'm sorry. There's a playroom, which used to be a playroom, now we call it a sitting room, which we want to give them, which opens up into the house, both, open up, the hall opens at the house. This is built as an addition to the house. We're just trying to give them a little space, looking at the options and possibilities, that they have a little space that they call their own. A bedroom either if we need an aide and you have to live downstairs, because sometimes older people need to live in their own quarters and they won't be able to live upstairs, or if they can have a bedroom upstairs with a handicapped bathroom. You know what it means to live for almost four years after share a powder room and bathe in a powder room and live off the kitchen? My father's living off the kitchen and playroom between the containers of water that we get and between some kids' toys. If you want to take a look, my mother's thing, she's packing boxes upstairs and boxes downstairs. She has no place to live, no place to call her own. We're trying to just give them a little bit of semblance of their own living space. We looked into adult communities, we looked into new construction, we looked into old construction. The best for them, we went through all the options, and the best for them is to live near children. They shouldn't be dependent on strangers. They shouldn't come on to government help. They should be able to be self-sufficient as much as they're able to. And for that reason, they're living by their children. It's our privilege, it's our honor. We're delighted to do it. But they deserve a little space of their own, a little living area of their own, something they can call home. The American dream is to own a home. They had the American dream. They lived about 55 years in their own home, self-sufficient. They married off the children and they deserve to have a place they call their home and their own space and their older years for many healthy years to come. So all we're asking is, let's make them a bedroom upstairs, a little room to sit, a little more living space in the house, a closet for my father's clothing. My mother should have a closet that's her own and she doesn't have to share a closet with a 12-year-old and walk around the basketball that's on the side and not trip over his clothing because he's still a child and he has a right to be a child. What's a 12-year-old doing living with his grandmother in this day and age? We buy a new house, we build a new house, we move somewhere else, but to make a new house, we looked into new construction. And new construction, there's no place in any townhouses, any duplexes are making, they're not making a handicapped bathroom on the main floor, they're not making a bedroom on the main floor, they're not making a handicapped ramp. It's a whole new. So here we're asking for a simple, just 11 feet. The neighbors don't mind. The neighbors are agreeable, the neighbors are delighted. If we would have had, if his uncle testified, he would have said, "I'm so happy for you, I'm so happy for your parents. I wish he can do it. He's a presence to the board. Everybody in the complex got the letter, everybody approves of it, everybody sees that the parents are living by them. It's an honor for them to have such people in the complex." And we ask just for a little variance. Thank you.
I just want to follow up. Your mental understanding of what it is. So the basement department is meant for, for Ms. Rebecca Jacobs' parents?
There's, I don't know what you're referring to. The existing basement, is that what you're calling the apartment? Because that's Mrs. Jacobs' mother is living there. There are no rentals outside of the, there are no rentals in this house outside of the family. Just to understand, the existing, you want to call it apartment, or the existing basement is Mrs. Jacobs' mother lives in that unit. Okay. The new addition to the basement-
To the Jacobs' parents?
Yes. There is a wheelchair lift. It goes up and down. There's, yes, goes down to the basement. Now, on the first floor, you'll notice that there's a bedroom and a sitting room. That's where they're going, that's for the parents. In addition to that, they can take the wheelchair lift, they can go down to the basement. There is a bedroom and there is a kitchenette. If God forbid they were to need an aide, the aide would stay down there. They have a grandchild that wants to come visit them. Again, they just want to make it that they have space. It is open to the house. It's not rentable as a separate unit.
It has to be a separate unit, no separate CO?
Forget no separate, more than no separate meters. There's definitely no separate meters. It's open to the house. There's no way they can make it into a separate apartment.
The first, the basement one is not a separate apartment.
It is. The steps, the steps are really, we should hear, wow, where? It really is. It just goes right from here. The steps go right in. There's no way to make it separate. There's no, there's no privacy. They're not trying to make it separate.
I mean, you could put a door right in there on top of the steps.
I mean, Rebecca Jacobs just testified, this is what it's for. Really, this is really what it's for.
I understand. I'm just not questioning, the question is, is maybe so separate that it could be, I mean, you know, in theory, it could be done as a separate apartment, you know, after 120 or whatever the case may be. That's, that's certainly the type of effect. I understand what you're trying to accomplish. The question is, is the best way to accomplish it or is there a way that can satisfy the problem of order at least I see, which is that it's a totally separate unit downstairs in the basement that encourages people in the town to, at some future time, to make that-
It doesn't even have a real kitchen. It's a kitchenette. It's not a full-sized kitchen. I don't see how this could be used as a separate apartment. Could it be attached to the other part of the basement? I don't think so. It doesn't even connect, does it? It is a connector. I guess it could be, but I don't know what that would be.
What's the access to the basement?
The access to the basement is you come in the side door on that pad that we spoke about, and you have steps that can go down at that point, or you can take the chairlift down.
No, what's going down? On the chairlift down? Or there's step, is it?
There's a step to the other part of the house.
It must be an entrance to be open.
No, when you're coming in here, raising your hand. You can go down. Go down.
You go down and go up.
There is only one entrance? There's only one entrance?
Inside, it's inside, it's just only one exterior.
Mr. Chairman, if you look on the first floor plan, when you come in the door, there's a landing. There are stairs that go down. There's stairs that go up and there's stairs that go down. So if you want to walk, you can walk. If not, you get on the chair and go up and go down. And, I mean, people can always do something with their basement. They can, you know, if this was wide open, you could go and somebody could come in and build walls. That's not what this is occurring to. And that area down there is only 11 feet wide.
It isn't big enough. It's one bedroom.
You know, it only makes sense for his parents because it's connected to the upstairs.
The way I look at it, every house in the town could build a basement. Every house could build on a basement, you know, and every house, which seems a lot of illegal apartments throughout, throughout, throughout the whole entire town. So if someone's worried about an illegal apartment, I think there's more other apartments to be worried about illegal apartments than this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's my personal opinion of all the other illegal apartments, illegal attic apartments throughout the town. The fact that there's no CO being issued over here, no rental CO being issued over here, and no separate meters doesn't put it, puts it in the same position as any other illegal apartments in town. Therefore, a basement is a basement, you know, build a basement. That's my opinion. But I would like to open to the public, I mean, I can't update the public. So if anyone wants to be heard on appeal of 2043, please step up.
I affirm. I support this application for two reasons. First, developers come in over here and they ask for variances because they have a lot of money. This applicant comes in and he's asking for variance because he is doing something special that most people don't do, taking in parents. And, yes, it might be some developers getting a good way of getting around. They'll start bringing old people by the applicants and start claiming it's for their parents. I look at this applicant, he doesn't look like a developer, so you could trust him that he's really, this is really the parents and this is really the applicant and he's taking care of it. And no matter what he could do in the future with it, something doing so special, I don't think there's any way we could even make him hard on this application when there's so much other stuff going on in the town. The second reason why I'm supporting this application, towards a lady Vivian Friedman got up by the master plan, claiming that that side of town, Forest Avenue, she lives most probably next to it, and 14th Street area, there's no traffic problem, so we could increase density. So anytime application comes up in those neighborhoods, 14th Street, Forest, just prove them density, they don't have any traffic issues, no parking problems. We're talking about the south side of Lakewood that there's problems, but that side of town, there's no problems accordingly to this lady Vivian Friedman. So, and generally, this applicant should be approved because it's next to Vivian Friedman. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing now, we're supposed to the public. Can I please have final comments to our motion on appeal number 4043? I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to say that I have seen Mr. Jacobs and the commitment and dedication that he has as his father, and to me, there's no doubt that whatever his intentions are there for him, I think if there's any reason why this body is here is to make exceptions for people like this, for somebody who's going to pretty much give over his house and go to the expenditure and the trouble of making addition and make it as comfortable as possible for his parents and elect to make a motion to approve.
And before I continue, our second motion, Lou, you just said, especially when you read your parents' cap to a meeting like this one tonight, shows a lot, and it's not just another, let me try to figure out a way how I can, we will, we'll make a lot of this.
And again, Mr. Chairman, before you even go further, I do want to thank you-
Second, that, I second. Mayor Gelli. So I have a first from Judy Rubiak, a second from Mayor Gelli.
Without any questions?
What?
Without questions.
Without questions, okay.
I just want to make sure that it's that. It also encompasses the parking issue?
Yes.
Are we referring to?
Yes.
We're being, approving a variance for parking.
Yes.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
And how this?
Yes.
Mr. Rubiak?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I commend you, Mr. Gelli.
Yes, thank you. Good night and good luck.
And again, I just wanted to thank you for taking them out of order. We do appreciate it.
We'll move forward and we'll go back to the word 4029 and get them out of the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, applicant 4028 Bernard-
...would like to carry his application to the next meeting.
This is the second, sir.
He met with a neighbor and they're going to work it out so that we don't waste any issues.
Whatever issues they have, you don't know what issue.
The neighbor or the-
The senior community is their neighbor and they want to work it out and come back with an application, then everybody's going to be happy.
No problem.
So. Okay, so is everyone, this is the second or third time?
I don't think this applicant was carried, I think it's been from the.
You can't include the change because we need a reach?
Yes.
Because we need a reach?
Yes.
No other reason, right?
Correct, correct.
This is the first time that we are carrying. Okay, excellent. Got most of the carries, 4028 Bernard Gorman.
Motion.
Motion from Mayor Gallagher, second from Lou Sheen. For a second, right?
Yes.
One more, with a waiver of mine and over the notice.
Correct.
Okay. 4028 for a second. Motion from Mayor Gallagher, the second from Lou Sheen. Matter of fact, I wrote both these.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Haversen.
Yes.
Mr. Ribby.
Yes.
Mr. Inger.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Haversen.
Yes. Anyone that's here for the number 4028 Bernard Gorman, you'll be heard for a second. Thank you, goodnight. Move forward. What did I say? I gave you my last order. Oh. Oh. 4038, give me one second, give me one second. Okay. Who is the last? Who is going to be the third for 4029? Oh, you're ready?
Okay. Give it to her.
Yes. What are we waiting for?
Start.
I'm waiting.
Okay. We'll start, I have to wait for Judy, I may, I do start your question. By, ready, we can read into the record.
I don't even know if she has to, because we're like in the middle of the separate, we gave all the testimony. Should I just wait for Judy or? We gave the testimony on this application, just, well, I'll start, but I was going to wait for.
Are we giving to the vote?
So, let's, let me, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mary Weinstein, attorney for the applicant, congregation, Malo Satora. Ah, here's Mr. Ribby, okay. Just to refresh the memory of the board, we actually gave pretty much all of the testimony on this application at the July 10th meeting. Here, we call, you opened up on this at about 10:30 or 10:40 with the caveat at the beginning that you said to me, this is Weinstein, we're shutting down at 11 o'clock.
That's correct.
So, the board actually was at the point of opening the matter to the public when we ran out of time. So, as a recap, the applicant has already received use variance approval to construct duplexes on this site. At the time that the applicant applied for use variance approval, the applicant had proposed a development with a mix of duplexes and triplexes. At that time, the board approved the duplex use and recommended to the applicant that they remove some of the units. The applicant then appeared before this board for subdivision and site plan approval for a development consisting of five duplexes and a couple of triplexes, and the applicant's application was denied. You listening to me? Then he's going to, then, Mr. Chairman, then you're going to say to me, what'd you say? Okay, so, we got use variance approval, we already have a use variance, this application is for subdivision and site plan only. In the interim, we came back once for site plan, got denied. At that point, the board gave the applicant some feedback that duplexes on lot sizes of 10,000 square feet or greater would be palatable to the board as while the use was approved by the board, the board felt the number of units being requested by the applicant was too much. The board also felt that it could not grant site plan approval on this site without a traffic study. Both of those points were mentioned specifically in the resolution, I could quote from it, I have it here if you'd like. The applicant has heeded the board's advice though and is now seeking a total of 12 duplex units plus one vacant 10,000 square foot lot and a lot that would contain, and then one other lot that contains an existing single-family home front against Salem Street. All of this was discussed at the last hearing. The only thing that wasn't discussed at the last hearing is that with regard to that extra single-family lot, this area is slated to be rezoned as R10A in the current master plan. Since the time that we were in front of this board, the master plan is now undergoing review hearings at the planning board with this specific site to be zoned as R10A. R10, this R10A zone would permit either single-family or duplexes on 10,000 square foot lots. Now, that extra lot that the applicant, the question came up at the last hearing about that extra lot. The applicant is just leaving that extra lot, not asking for any variances on it. That means that the applicant is asking for it to be approved as a 10,000 square foot lot. He can't do anything with it right now unless he comes back to this board for relief because he's not even asking for a variance for an undersized lot. All he's asking for is to leave it as an additional 10,000 square foot lot so that if and when this zone gets changed, as is likely to happen because it is slated in the master plan that's currently under review, at that point, if it becomes R10A, he could either put a single-family home on it or a duplex for that matter, which would be permissible. That's what we're asking. I can.
Now I remember where we're up to over here. I do remember that we've come in on the 9,000 square foot lots back in the day and we called them, I believe, if I remember correctly, if anyone sees number one, please tell me, that we called them to be one of the minimum lots of 10,000 square feet. That's correct. So you did come, you did bring back the houses, the apartment house, the 10,000 square foot lots on duplexes that he has had and received back in the day. I know, I remember that last time you were here a few months ago, a few months ago, Jerry, our attorney, was very adamant to figure out what we're doing with this lot, and I think that's where we left off. And.
Correct.
And that's where we have to continue and we're open to the public.
I think we were, yeah, Graham had really presented his testimony. The only thing, I don't think we presented the testimony of the traffic expert before we opened to the public. The board had specifically requested a traffic study, so I leave it to the board if the board wants to hear the traffic expert's testimony, but.
If he is for it, I'm here.
Okay, then, first, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to hear your comments, I'm here two, three months ago, or two months.
Your father here then?
Yeah, he was, fine, but are all members of the board that are up here tonight, is everyone here on July 10th?
Was you here, new here? Do you have a new hair? This was in June, July, we couldn't leave it for the.
It was July, it was, it was the first July meeting, you had two. It was the July 10th meeting.
Right, we ran out of time and we once again gave it at the second July meeting, but never happened because Perry said not to go over because the public wasn't making war. And because they were objected to continuing because they were going over invitation, that they were considering that they wanted to meet as a line. So we only heard it once in the beginning of July, and that's what we hear today. We still have, we have to hear it tonight, matter of fact, because else we're running out of time.
Mr. Chairman, it's fine, I would clarify who's, is everybody here, who's.
First meeting in July. We're all here, I don't know if you know. You don't, you don't have it.
Well, we have six.
We have six, so, so we're. Let's continue, and Mr. Ribby, I will figure out if he was here, we have six, so we're definitely going to continue.
But then you have a right to vote for a vote.
Let's continue the testimony, can I hear, it's getting late, there's a lot, there's a heavy agenda. No, we're going to call Mr. Kennel first, because he specifically asked me for a traffic.
Mr. Chairman, it's getting a little difficult here, so.
That'll happen.
One at a time, in case you didn't know that. Mr. Gallagher.
So, will you listen to my.
I do.
Can I have your name, Mr. Kennel?
Sure. Scott Kennel, K E N N E L, with McDonough, Ray Associates, 1431 Lakeland Road, Mansfield. Yeah, our firm prepared a traffic impact study that was submitted as part of this application, which dated May 18, 2017. It included, peak hour traffic counts along Chestnut Street within the last year at the intersection of Chestnut and Stamford Hills Road, which comes in opposite an access and office building, so basically you have a four-way intersection there today. And in general terms, the traffic counts indicated that Chestnut Street has approximately 770 to 780 vehicles two-way during the morning peak hour and PM peak hour. And then as far as the development, it's consisting of six duplexes or 12 dwellings utilizing the Ocean County trip generation rates for dwellings in Lakewood. It's estimated that during the morning peak hours, the 12 dwellings would generate 17 additional trips and during the afternoon, 24 additional trips. Based on having the traffic projections, then we surcharge that onto the traffic counts collected within the last year, added a growth rate and projected out to 2026 as required by Ocean County. And the level service at the site access was a level service C for both the morning and afternoon. So it operating well within the acceptable range of the level service. I think the other component of our traffic study was important that summarized, there's a number of roadway improvements that are slated for Chestnut Street. First of all, at the Route 9 and Chestnut Street intersection, the NJ DOT Corner Study has recommended additional improvements on the Chestnut Street approaches, Cross Street and on the other side, where, but specifically on the Chestnut Street westbound approach that we want to provide three approach lanes or stages two, and I think everybody agreed that that should be done yesterday. But, again, that was identified as a future improvement. The other critical.
I'm starting to talk to you, but when you say future improvement, does that mean ten years or, or within the works? What does that mean?
That, of that one, I have identified three improvements. That improvement, I don't have a timeframe for all, I can state is that the NJ DOT Corner, sorry, Route 9, had identified that as a improvement of need. There was no timeframe, so I can't, as we sit here today, I can't say whether it's five years or 10 years, but it's been acknowledged and that's the first major step. I'm going to give you some other better news as far as the other improvements. At the other end of Chestnut Street and New Hampshire Avenue, Ocean County has recognized that that is a need for a traffic signal. That is, they're in the process now of hiring a consultant to design a traffic signal at that location, and their desire to have a traffic signal up and running by 2020 at that location. So that'll be an improvement in the chestnut.
That is in the works, you're right.
That is in the works.
Good.
And then the other improvement that helps Chestnut Street that is wanted to be more or less driven by the township is the Vermont Avenue construction between Chestnut and Route 70, which is again, is it'll be another benefit, another need to access to the state highway. So again, even though, and I thought it was important to itemize those improvements, even though this development is going to generate a small percentage or small percentage increase, but ultimately, the Stamford Hills Road intersection will operate a level service C with the 12 additional dwellings.
And Vermont, where's that up in the township, or maybe?
My understanding is within the next two years.
I could add that we are doing that design, we have to submit to NJ DOT as well as DOT and get their approvals. It's our goal to have this property.
So that's a lot further for me to process.
That probably.
And I would be missing out if I should advance. Okay, so, so we have a traffic signal on the top of the market, up in the world.
That's in the planning stage, that they have.
Okay, but as long as the price is low, we're going to move forward, not going to decline. They already, Mike and Ed, they've already had a meeting with NJ DOT, had discussions because of approximately 70 and the state has endorsed it, subject to seeing the final design plans. So just so everybody's aware, because of its approximately 400 feet from Route 70, it was critical that the county get an endorsement from the state and they have with the concept on it. That's, anybody else want to spell for questions?
You mentioned that this is not operating at a level service C, is that for both the testing and the growth conditions?
That's correct.
Explain to me more briefly, for levels of service A for us.
Well, level service is determined by the delay and we rate it from A to F. Level service A will be delayed zero to 10 seconds. The level service C range goes from 15 to 25 seconds, that's average vehicle delay over an hour. So some vehicles may wait 30 seconds, some may wait 15, but the average vehicle delay for the Stamford Hills Road approach is 22 to 23 seconds with the AM and PM peak hours. The design criteria when you design intersection, you use a level service D as a threshold and that resulting level service is better than a design threshold of level service D that is, the standard benchmark is doing here, you know, thirty years.
So this is per applicable traffic.
And it's well within the acceptable design standards.
Correct. And so, yeah, so for a person going on the Chestnut Eve or Hampshire Avenue, coming down from Chestnut, going to Hampshire, one of the four slower mansion lane, a left turn or a right turn. You're saying it's a level service C at that intersection?
At Stamford Hills Road in Chestnut. I, as far as the other intersection, I haven't analyzed it, it's subject to the county's final design plan.
Okay, so let me understand that, your traffic study is strictly on the Stamford, Hill, Chestnut intersection?
As far as the level service.
But it doesn't give me any, any conclusion or anything of what's happening, most of the cars are powered, what happens on Route 9 or, or Hampshire Avenue? How much traffic this will add, conduct it to those two meetings?
What I can tell you that is that on Hampshire Avenue, it, there'd be an increase of seven to 10 vehicles during the peak hours. As far as the Route 9 intersection, it could be an increase of 10 to 14. That's on the premise that none of the site traffic or vehicles from this site use Vermont Avenue to either go north up towards Line Street or towards Route 70. So if the worst case, it'd be 10 to 14 at the Route 9 and Chestnut Street intersection, which is less than 1% of the total intersection volume at that location.
Well, then you have the new Vermont coming in that.
Well, that will tighten off some traffic as well.
Correct. So to your test point, and you feel that this addition of, of, um. 12 times 4 is how much?
We're, we're 12, 12 dwellings, there's six duplexes, 12 dwellings.
Right. That amount of cars won't impact the intersections on 9 and Chestnut or on New Hampshire and Chestnut.
Well, you can't say it won't be impact, one car is an impact.
I, I can say that.
But, but, but again, these are, the future improvements there can be able to accommodate the increase in traffic as a result of this. And this development will also be responsible to make a contribution into the Ocean County Transportation Fund, which hasn't been determined yet, just so you're aware, but this applicant also has another obligation to the county, again, in support and to help fund these other roadway improvements in the area.
Any other questions with the handle?
Mentioned that you did study, AM study, PM study.
That's, yeah, typically we do from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM and 3:00 to 6:00 PM. The peak hours occur at, recall, it's 8:45 to 9:45, yes, 8:45 to 9:45 and then 3:30 to 4:30. That's the highest 60-minute period during those three-hour recordings in the morning and afternoon.
Right, and that's a deep day for the weekend.
That's a deep day, yes.
And you do the whole span, you take that whole span of time. You're saying that it's from 7:00 to 10:00?
Correct. Yes. And then, and that's, all that data summarized in the traffic report that was submitted to the board as part of this application.
Jerry, do you think you've had a brief review?
Yes, I have here.
And are you okay with it?
Based upon the testimony as it stands.
Is there any, and we have motion for the, you see any, 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 you close there?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing a good look per se. I'm not sure if we ever mentioned it, on your trip generation, it looked like you actually increased the curve of account, to account for the potential to have, to have basic complaints.
Well, that's, that's the Ocean County requirement, and that's correct. These are higher trip generation rates that are in excess of any other community that do traffic.
So this the council, the national business.
That's correct. These are the Ocean County approved trip rates.
I, I don't know, I'm amazed, I traveled the road off and, and the peak hours, many intersections going down, I see the cars stacked up, so I just don't understand any of those numbers based upon the observation that I see going back and forth that, rushing, I've got to a point, I don't go on Chestnut Street anymore. And I feel sorry for those people trying to convince, I don't know how that's going to work.
Well, and I don't, again, as far as the observations that goes to those critical locations, that being Hampshire and Chestnut, I agree that there are delays.
I'm talking about the many intersections between Route 9 and, and New Hampshire Avenue, where several streets intersect into Chestnut and, and peak hours, you see cars backed up, and in the morning, you see cars backed up trying to get on Chestnut.
Yeah, unlike the testifies, that we conducted those extensive traffic counts of Stamford Hills, there's already 67 dwellings or townhomes in there, so it's an active community fully occupied and those are the results that we came up.
Oh, it's, I understand.
Yeah.
It's a problem now. Question, like, what day do you think this, this?
Wednesday, December 14th, 2016.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, December 14th, 2016.
Wednesday, December 14th. I see you mean, you can have that.
I, I can tell you what is, because the traffic generations from the existing dwellings were generally consistent with the Ocean County rates, so schools were in session, I can't, I don't have those notes as far as, but what happened, that was the act of that thing? Correct.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
I do. I always find, you know, there, I live around, I live around Chestnut. The good thing that, that I see, like I said, because we lived there, because I lived there, I learned that we don't go down New Hampshire Avenue, we're not going to town, now we use the Vermont to the Line Street area, which has a leading lot. Looking forward to the Vermont being open to Route 70, because if there was some access to the auto area right now, the way that the people that live in that area that knows the road, the way to get out is to get out through the commercial properties that they use to shoot the bank or Charlie Brown, because that's an easier way to get out to Route 70 than to get on to, um, Mount James and Route 9, just being done already. I know that they widened the street, but they're also adding a cycle on the other side that goes to hurt you from the development all the way up to Vermont. Okay, the sticks already there, so we're in the, yeah, under Chestnut, underground Chestnut.
The wider Chestnut?
Yeah, because you know, the cycle's just time. So, the development is going to be the wider stream of development, so therefore the cars that are making left-hand turn, they go into the, the, you know, the school that there, also the bank.
Yeah.
Okay, to get on Route 70, the cars do not stop, they're allowed to go around it, it's not stable, that they made. So, it's a terminal, it's a terminal, they're getting an actual terminal to be able to go straight through.
At Stamford Hill Service.
Right, so, what they've done, that they, because they widen the street, they're about, the cars, even there's a back, the cars are about to go inside and continue going forward, so I see that they're already working on expanding the new Chestnut Street to be able to allow the. So I see that they're already working on expanding the new Chestnut Street to be able to allow the movement of traffic.
Sure. And just for the board's benefit, the other, as part of the New Hampshire Avenue intersection improvement, they're gonna modify the ramp that sits between, um, Chestnut Route seventy and they're gonna add another traffic signal opposite the park complex. Now, what that does is that allows platoon traffic and provides additional gaps along Chestnut. So it's gonna be another benefit, and that's tied in with the New Hampshire Avenue traffic city, just to begin.
Little part of this, uh, little part of the.
New Hampshire, the county program.
Or that they're looking at.
Correct.
That's the matter there. Okay, okay, fine, yes, go ahead.
Mike. You mentioned that are the, early before the planning board, is that this entire, uh, area going to become our ten A, yes?
The master plan that the planning board is reviewing is to be zoning this areas our ten A, yes.
So if we were to do nothing, uh, a few months, they would, they would, uh, they would, they would make it to our ten A, they would need to be our, you know, for, for the.
Correct, then we could go to the planning board and we could get it approved. But again, just let me, let me point out to you that you've already granted the use variance, and we're really only here on the side of the line. But the answer is yes.
Let me interject over here a minute, figure out what's being discussed at the planning board, what's coming up. I don't need to hear a lot of people talking up what this does, it's all hypothetical. It's like saying, this was a master plan from two thousand, so this is gonna happen. This is gonna have the scope to be approved and, 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 you know?
Which, Mr. Rose, which is why we're here, we have the use variance, we'd like to get the site plan approval. It'll probably be a while, but, you know, I don't know when the master plan is gonna get approved, and even then, the township committee still has to change the zone. The master plan is just the recommendation, and then is the township committee still has to rezone it. It's gonna take a long time.
I, I, you know, I have a question for our attorney.
Mike, Mike.
You know, in our last meeting, in our last meeting, I, I think we've got a seat alone, and we came, which discussion was, we assumed beginning of the year, that this was part of the space, this, this last plot, and then we kind of, got the board, that our intention that actually they want a lot later, and they're just not bringing us now, possibly in the future, it's gonna be a different one. So now we're asking, as part of this, to approve this, and that that was a square foot lot, and then if it does, and then town, would she zone? Would they still have to come back, those, those dwellings?
No, I, I would, I would, you know, switch it something else.
Correct.
They're, they're, it's gonna make more damage home.
Right, so that, and that, and.
I want to raise a question, a lot that we're talking about, that if you want later, let's hear, that you're, um, was that covered by your provisional use variance? Your part twenty seven?
I believe it wasn't, I believe it wasn't, and that's why.
That's the case that you have to amend the use, if you're going to consider.
And as Jerry said last time.
Which is the reason that it wasn't included as an additional lot, because.
And that's why they're not including the reasonable lot right now, because we can't put a house in, I mean, I was concerned, because we only approve, uh, uh, duplexes and just.
It's probable that Brandon was not going to grant any rights.
To that lot, which, which, Jerry, like, that's exactly, that's exactly the reason. When we came through the use, when we, when we came through the use variance, that lot wasn't part of it. Had that lot been a part, we would have requested an extra duplex on that lot, because again, the feedback we got from the board was duplexes on ten thousand square feet. It is ten thousand square feet. So you're right, the whole thing doesn't make sense, except that we don't have a use variance on that one lot. Therefore, we just said, leave it over, either we'll come back for a use variance on it, or the zone will get changed, and at that point, we'll build on it. But for the moment, it's open space, because you're not granting anything this evening that would allow us to use it. We can't even use it, isn't, you can't build on it.
You passed us as part of the rules, considering.
Not an approved lot. That's, see, Mr. Ingram, that's, we're not asking you to consider an approved lot, because we know it doesn't have a use variance. We're just asking you to leave it there as a ten thousand square foot lot. It's open space right now, because it, we can't build on it without getting approval from the zoning board. Effort to build on an undersized lot, because again, we don't have a use var, first, we don't have a use variance to build single families at all, um, on an undersized lot, and we don't have a use variance to put a duplex on it. So right now, we're just saying, just keep it as a separate lot, so that it's open space, can't do anything with it unless we come back to this board for a use variance or for variance to build a single family on an undersized lot. Or eventually, the township committee may change the zone, and if they do, if we have that as a ten thousand square foot lot, at that point, we could build a right, as a right, whatever that zone change permits.
I really want to see how this is exactly, that's the problem. And, but, I'm also beginning a lot of ways, it's a lot, that's it. If it's not, it's a day, you come along, the, the, you know, one or five or ten, it's gonna be a lot. Coming around the spur, you know, it just kind of makes sense, that's what we're saying, so, 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 how, 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 it's definitely not.
Mr. Ingram.
Open space, has open space to the property.
Mr. Ingram, at, at the end of the day, that lot is not part of the application, is that correct?
It is part of the application. It is part of the application, but it doesn't have a use variance associated with it. So that's why we're suggesting.
You're here for, for the site.
We're here for site plan, we've already got the use variance. This piece was added into the application after we got the use, either the applicant acquired it later or whatever.
So you mean that we gave them that, that not?
Denied who to use, that's the reason. No.
No.
Well, that piece doesn't, that piece wasn't included, the long piece wasn't included either, but we're not asking for a duplex use on that, so we're, we're not asking for it. Right. No, 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 but that is the reason, the reason is because it was added after the fact.
So it's a nice application, what are you actually asking for on that empty lot?
That empty lot, really, what we wanted to do with it ideally is just carve it out as a separate ten thousand square foot lot. Again, we can't build on it without further relief, until the zone, unless and until the zone gets changed, the applicant could not possibly build on that ten thousand square foot lot without coming back to this board for relief. But we would prefer.
Unless the township changes it.
Unless the township changes the zone.
And if that timing happens.
The other option would be that the board says, we don't feel comfortable, so we'll leave it attached to the lot adjacent to it. If, if we, if the applicant has no choice, he's gonna say, okay, do that, but that just would require that he has to come back to the board to get a subdivision at a later date to subdivide it off of that lot, which is the reason that our applicant is requesting that be separated. It is open space for now, because it has no approval on it.
Right.
Correct. Say the piece of property, say the piece of property.
Block.
Say the piece of property. Yeah, there, there's no way to look anything on it.
But he, but he doesn't want to restrict it for posterity to be known as open space, his only goal. Yeah, that's not the goal here. That's not the goal.
In terms of our open space, this public open space property, it's undeveloped.
Right.
So let's, 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 uh, prove that ten thousand.
It's not, it's not approved.
Not approved.
It's not a buildable lot. Mr. Ingram, at present, it's not a build, as a ten thousand square foot lot in this zone without a use variance, it's not buildable. So that's exactly what it is, it's gonna remain an undeveloped lot that belongs to the developer, that he has hopes that in the future, he's going to be able to develop. But right now, he can't, he's hoping that the zone will change, and at the time that the zone gets changed, he'll be able to.
Realize that, that, that later on, if you want to, if you want to build a property, you won't be able to get anything on it, because it was a self-located. It created a self-located, do you realize that? And you can now, something like, do you, do you?
It's hoping the zone's gonna get changed.
Do you feel like that?
It's very strange, it's very, 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 very.
It creates a self-created archer, and you won't be moving anything on it.
Well, you know, not if the zone gets changed, but, yeah, I, I think you're correct, but, but, but not if the zone gets changed. If the zone gets changed, I, as I said, that's all. I, well. You ask, you ask me what the applicant's goals are, being totally straight and candid with the board and telling the board what the applicant's goals are. Right.
Open, on the chance that you are able to, not, because we always have to connect with these, but, sure, it's not, it's not. If the zone gets changed, our, maybe the first, and, and.
That's very much what it was then.
Yes. Very well planned.
Keep rolling, guys. Huh? Keep rolling, okay, I believe we're over the poll, let's go ahead, let's go for the poll. I think we all understand what's going on over here, um, and let's move forward, but, before I go to the poll, I want to ask my guys, guys, I think I break first, when you guys want to move forward. You want to finish? All right, for the finish, okay.
My name is Lori Lee.
Lori.
Lee.
You spoke out, didn't you? The man, the teenager bringing, you swear from the test, right, should this not be the word?
I did.
Can I have your address, man?
What?
Address.
I do, I do not.
You don't have to. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, a lot of things have been addressed with this application over three or four years. And some of it has been denied for all of it, but you have never addressed that it's an impacted zone that you're allowing to build duplexes. It's impacted by a repairing zone, a flood hazard zone, and they keep moving the impact from one side to another. They don't even keep the impact in, in the same place. And when they did all the other applications, they asked for a half approval of lot twenty-nine and half approval of lot thirty. And in this application, they want the whole approval of lot twenty-nine and lot thirty. And the reason that they want the whole approval is because they moved the impactions a little bit away, and now they can build on those lots in a better fashion. Also, they added lot fifteen on top of lot twenty-nine, which was never there before. They're very inventive. And this, when you gave land use approval, you were only addressing wetlands, you were not addressing all the impactions. The, uh, one minute, please. The gap between the branch. It's definitely with the impactions. They never put this on their application. They put it on this one, but they moved, they moved it from the east to the west. And if you, when you gave the permission, uh, for land use, you only addressed wetlands. You didn't address all the impactions. And when they made an application to the DUP, they only made an application for the freshwater, wetland permit. They didn't make an application for the flood hazards. There is also a flood hazard area. And when the DUP gave us their determination, they said that they have to get a permit for the flood hazard area before they can build there.
If the second's left here.
What?
If the second's left here, that's fine.
Oh. Well, I don't know why you're doing this, but you should address all of this, because you can't, they can't legally build there without getting a flood hazard permit. And it's right here in the letter from the DUP. And it's also, it's a repairing zone that they're building in, and that all has to be addressed. Thank you. And I also have a property adjacent to it, that they have vacated a road that takes away my ingress, and they're grading the road, they're, they're gonna flood my property. So I need some help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Green House.
I'm from David Bender, D-O-V-I-D, N-D-R. Can I go a little slower, sir? I'm from David Bender, D O V I D, last name is Bender, N E N, D E R, level 160, Colorado Drive, which is off Justice Street, close to 9. Yes. So, a few things. Number one, I think it's a very good idea of getting a light on the corner of Chestnut and Hampshire, but taking into consideration that's being done based on the traffic right now, not based on what's gonna come afterwards. So, we need a light and also mention, as mentioned, Chestnut is completely backed up and this is only in a further end. So, a light is needed right now. It's not something that's gonna be done because of this project. That's number one. Number two, the president of the traffic study mentioned it's only, the study was only done for that specific intersection coming out of development. Now, Chestnut and 9, a lot of people could attest, is completely backed up. Second, uh, every development that anything that gets done over there is gonna be adding, um, more and more traffic. Uh, last but not least, I testified before on firefighter this morning. We had a call in Second Street. We got a report. Somebody was locked in an elevator. I had my lights flashing. I went down Chestnut Street. I wanted to try to go down 9 because you can sit here for a half hour if I leave my house and try to go down 9. It's impossible. I mean, I've testified before that I have to sit here if I have to get back to Shattuck and go the other side of town. Right at the shop, if I don't leave the second night I'm able to, I'm gonna sit in traffic. A lot of times I don't have time to sit around because of the problems that she has. But that's a personal issue. Getting back to saying I was a firefighter, we had a call today for trapping in an elevator on Second Street. I left my house. It was early after 9:00 ago because the crew was already at the building to San La Horns for Memorial Day for 9/11. I must have sat in the corner of Chestnut and New Hampshire about five minutes, lights flashing. Everybody saw me with my lights flashing. I'm a volunteer giving up my time to go help other people. I would not be able to make that left because there was nowhere to go. So, I know the light is coming, but it's gonna increase it. In fact, that call went out. That call got taken care of. We got another call right after that for a smell of gas. I made it from my house all the way and I cut through Blue Close and I got to Cedar Bridge by Blue Close. And at that time, the second call was canceled. Fire torture, if you got there, the town was no problem. And then I went to turn around and home. So, from my house to Blue Close took 15 minutes with the traffic at 9:00 in the morning. So, we're dealing with people's lives over here. I know it, it may not seem like a lot and may seem like only adding a couple of more cars. I testified last time as well. There was a call we had on, um, Westgate. I was going down Pro Street. That's a separate story. And I think that took me something like 20 minutes to get from my house to there. And we had reports of the house completely on fire and then it was something exposed. Put it right away. The U P S driver, but as everybody knows, Westgate's built pretty close. And if one house goes up, it'll goes up. So, we deal with people's lives over here. Every, every bit of more development that's done makes always that response time a bit longer, puts people, more people at risk. And I don't think it should be approved because you're risking more and more lives by, by, by building up the traffic and making it impossible to get out there and try to help people.
Mr. Chairman, just want to remind everybody this, this application will be approved already. It's just a cycle.
I know. That's, I definitely just, if Ovi, with the resolution, I don't see what date that was approved because of this real car, they, they, I don't think. But right now, we have this in our hands, which I hope Chris and Jerry and Al and Sal will, Terry, Jason Terry and Al Sal will handle. How do you deal with it because of the issue where the ground changed to what it was when we approved it back in the day? Um, we have to give them a new blood project because that's what was approved. But they, back in the ground changed, so what do we do? You know, and we'll talk about it first. Let's just close, let's just get to the public and then we'll, we'll, we'll discuss.
I affirm that Ovi is already typing the minutes. He wants me to stop working.
I just need your name again.
I know because you live there. You have property over there. But you're looking to sell your own house to.
Well, let's get your name first.
Okay, Shloem McQuine.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I just want to mention something. There's a board member. His name is Michael Gross. Do I have your correct name? What is your name? Modi Gross? He's being treated very unfairly by the chairman. He has read it a second time and... Yes, and he brought up some good points on this application, and I won't elaborate on that. He, he basically was bringing up, if the planning board is, is a chance that they're going to approve this application, this property, who may depend, one is applicant, one they come to the zoning board. Why doesn't he wait two days? Find out. I understand. He asked a question and I want an answer. He asked a question. I'll answer to you, even though he got knocked down before. The answer for that is because of the planning board, this application would have never flown. Because there is some paper streets that this applicant, and I brought it up to Terry before, um, that this applicant sits on Paper Street, some of the towns, some of the setback. And Paper Streets is the right of ways streets. That means is they have to vacate it. And if you look at this map, you see where there's connecting, the streets over here. This is going to Chestnut, Goodham Avenue. He's coming in over here. Kings Avenue, he's coming in over here. He's connecting, he's still over here, but he's coming in over here. And this is causing dislocation. This will become a long ways and this will hold it. Now, the planning board now, please, if you want to speak, speak into the mic directly. That's what you have to do as a chairman and as a member. This inside hoping is not acceptable and not legal. Um, as, as far as, and, and I, and I ask you not to be interrupted because then you'll clock the four minutes. And I want to finish my thought. This, what Terry mentioned to me is part of not connect, asking to connect those streets because this is a wetland. But Terry told me it's possible to connect it to Chestnut and to make not a dead entrance from this hole. He's connecting it to this and, and, and the next development. They will also be able to open it up to make it more access to Chestnut and keep up the grid. The reason is because the planning board is very into now is the keeping our grid. This type of behavior, vacating streets and then going to the county club, the zoning board approved it and we could vacate the streets. This caused this whole problem. It's outside of Lakewood and there's no grid anymore and that's the reason why we have the traffic. Now, I know it's very, the applicant is not required by law to improve it, but you're not giving the township to then see with the traffic circulation. Maybe they want to spend the money with all the impact fees that they're going to charge for the developers to, to open that up if it's needed. With him putting towns on Paper Street, I don't think it's acceptable. Now, I would like to question the traffic engineer. That's cross-examination and any questions asking in, and I'll make a chart. I'll ask you three questions. One is you mentioned that on Chestnut Street, they're going to widen Chestnut Street. Do you have any documents from the county that they're planning to do it?
As far as the New Hampshire Avenue and those approvals?
No, no, not New Hampshire. Open up Chestnut Street. There was something mentioned. I think maybe of course Ovi Gonzalez mentioned it, so I'm not cross-examining him. He lives over there.
But I'm questioning him. I don't have any documents as far as each Chestnut Street improvement. My understanding is that there are sidewalks planned and underway along Chestnut Street. And the only other place where it would be improvements, and I would refer to Terry's office, would be where Vermont Avenue intersects Chestnut. But I have not seen those planes.
My information from the county, just to let you know for future references, there is no improvement scheduled over there. As far as widening, they're required by developments to widen them, but they're not widening the whole, the whole Chestnut Street. Sorry.
Correct. I never, I never said that.
Okay. It was from Ovi Gonzalez, so I'm sorry. Okay.
The one that's widening are the builders. Okay, they're widening because they want the bus stops to be able to stop on the side, pick up the kids and let the traffic still keep flowing.
But that's only when the developments are going. Chestnut Street is big and that's not going to be widened. So, the traffic is more distant to that end where it's not wide. Now, as far as, you mentioned something on New Hampshire and Route 70, and, um, New Hampshire and Chestnut. It's right next to Route 70. There is a state highway. My understanding is that whenever the county wants to improve that, they have to get permission or endorsement from the state to do that. Did they get this endorsement already?
I spoke with Mark Jenke, Ocean County Traffic Engineer. He's had a, at least one field meeting and a, another meeting with N J D O T personnel. And they, and the N J D O T is agreeable to have a traffic signal at Chestnut, New Hampshire. And now it's subject to them submitting defined, detailed traffic signal plans and what would happen. But in concept, the N J D O T has agreed to a traffic signal at Chestnut and New Hampshire.
Now, as far as Vermont, Vermont, I'm not answering it right. I apologize. Um, Vermont is, it's not just working to open it up and obviously they also have to work for the state, but obviously that is more in process. Now, Vermont people are going to come in or going to go out. I know it's going to be both ways. The reason why I'm mentioning it is because most people on Chestnut are going north. Of course, they live over there. They're going north to the town. They don't go to, actually, let's see them over there after Route 70. They just go, they want to go to work, to schools, to babysitters. Everything goes north. And now you're going to have the increased traffic from Route 70 also coming in Vermont. So, are you sure this Vermont Avenue is going to increase traffic or decrease?
What I stated was that having an internal avenue connection is to improve traffic conditions in the area. I have other opportunities to access Route 70. As the board member indicated earlier, right now people do that by going through businesses. Now, if they have a public roadway to do that, it's gonna be improved by not having, um, vehicles go through business parking lots to go from Chestnut to Route 70. So, again, it creates a formal connection and it will provide a better traffic flow in the area, I think.
Does this board member live in Ishiva, over in Iqbal North, or he has some business going south? Okay, now, one more question. Route 9, intersection Route 9, where he says that N J D U P, whatever that's called, is in a study to do something over there. And we all saw the study. They came down over here. We all saw it. They said it's, we only recommend it to the state, but the state did not make a decision under recommendation. Do you have any documents that the state is taking their recommendation and implementing it? Or it's just a recommendation from an organization that they recommended to the state and it's like 20 years ago? The same company recommended to do that, but it never happened.
As I stated, it was a recommended improvement of location. I'm not aware of whether plans have been advanced beyond that. Or that is a major step to at least identify and make recommendations so that they can be considered to be put into the pipeline.
Got you. One more question, sorry, about the vacation of the streets. Is that your, um, could you give an opinion on that? Why it's better not to keep the grid and just use this part of vacated streets to put townhomes over there? Or it's better to keep the vacated streets like this? The township could in the future do some improvement to connect to the north, the west, the east. And it will help also the garden, whatever it's called, Stanford Meadows, apartment complex, that they will have some openings from all sides.
I can answer that. I haven't evaluated that or was prepared to address vacations.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public want to be heard? Step up.
Any, you need a person?
Zalman Sorozkay. S A L M A N, Sorozkay, S O R O T Z K A F.
S O R O?
T Z K A F. My address is 100 Stratford Place, Lakeview. Yeah? Yes, yes, I do. Thank you. Um, I just want to bring out a couple of points over here. Number one, it is a little interesting. Um, I don't really, I don't see too many neighbors from the Chestnut area coming to object. When I see somebody, um, a guy, Mr. Clawing, which doesn't live in the area at all, which just objects anything possible. So, I think just a nuisance to the town. And I live in the town and obviously traffic bothers me, but I think people are bothered more by him than his building in the town. So, somebody who, who has nothing to do with the Chestnut area probably asked Mr. Clawing to come and drive here. But it's interesting that he'll just come, waste time and just waste people's time. So, I'm very not happy about that as a person living in town. Number two, um, nobody disagrees that there is a problem with traffic in the town. Nobody's coming to argue that. But the, the fact is, let's say, normal people in this township, it's a college township. People come here, they study here, they get married, they bring up their kids here. We need, we need space to live. So, now there has to be some type of development. The, the, the answer is not gonna be to show development. There has to be normal development. And the problem with traffic is minus the 20 cars that are not living at the same time is not gonna be the answer. So, if a person got the variance, they have the duplexes there, just to make the person crazy to come back and come back because Mr. Clawing is videoing it. Nobody cares about Mr. Clawing. If you come to leave, it just wastes his time and I can deal with him. It's not a problem. We'll take him bowling. We'll take him on the track. The normal people in the township, which are the normal people, I don't see them. I don't see that having a problem. It was pretty happy to me. This guy, Ben, come. Let, let, let's hug it up. Yeah, sure. So, Mr. Ben, I understand he is a fighting angel. We all applaud him for that. We heard many stories for waiting for the bad. But that's one person. Where's, where's all the neighbors? I don't know. Right now, I just don't see you keeping. Yeah, we're gonna end right here. I don't see a reason to keep him coming back and coming back. There's the person. He owns the property. He has the bearings. There's no reason to keep him making crazy about this and about that to make, you know, one, two people happy. That does not make sense. I'm with the boys. I live with the Ilo. Yes, I do travel every single day down Chestnut. I go to the Albert area and we go around to that area. I understand it's a little tragic, but I'm, I'm, what bothers me is people that are developing for analysis. Not a guy who wants to make a couple of duplexes. People need a place to live. I appreciate you talking. Thanks a lot. Anyone else in the public want to be heard? Seeing them close to the public. Uh, at this time, I think I would think that you both.
If I can ask Chairman, um, we've heard...
Before you continue, I want to make the public announcement. And I lyric may ask it to Mr. Mark, Mr. Modi Gross. Mr. Modi Gross, if I had to do it any which way, I apologize, but I don't think I did. But if I had to do it any which way on the record, I apologize. Thanks.
That's great question. We heard comments earlier, Chairman, uh, about wetlands and floodplains as well as streets being vacated. Can we have the, that was tested, the shit out position you testified has to, what's being done?
We absolutely can. Um, I'm just gonna have to, I'm gonna call Graham McFarlane. He is going to have to be sworn because he has not yet been sworn this evening.
But can we leave this right? I would like to remember. I think I'm gonna pick up right over here. I'm gonna let go. Um, I have a couple of questions that come down notes and on the vacant land, on the, of the, this is the lead that's eventually. I will list some, um, issues that we spoke about, which I refuse.
I, I, I think it's tested, but he may help if you...
Yes, that's, I have a list of questions here that I need to go over. I will list whatever. Um, the vacant land is an issue, but we'll pick that up when we... We're still friends. It has to calm down. I don't like enemies. You hear from me?
I just came to Eric, you know?
Whatever.
I would say, you have to take our vote. Otherwise, it's a lot.
Does it also play the operations center?
It's a good factor.
I might not see it again. I didn't bring a charger.
Early on, you never come with the fire. It's having a burn.
Oh, it's not bad.
It's not bad.
I can, you got this again, yes, it's what I'm saying. We want more rest of the planet. Don't kill a colony.
Nice guy. He's being right, he's the driver, he has the license.
Right across from them. Bicycle, yeah.
I want to make it the nation. How? Have you, have you, we have to do. What's the, what's the school name? Moses Redd. Right across from you. So I have to drive there. Ah. Then I have to, you're on this. That was once, you're gonna kick you out. I have to speak to the other, better go to the. I was bringing it up, I couldn't remember. Gorn, this is only if they're not, they didn't show up here. My guy is already out. No, 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 that's a problem. Keep it deep, you're not. Okay, should we do this again?
Chairman, you back in session?
Yes. Move on, please.
Um, Chris, I think we were about to swear in Mr. McFarlane.
Mr. Farlane, Mr. Farlane, um, you swear a permit to test by two this matter of the board?
I do.
Can I have your full name again?
Oh, sure, Brandon McFarlane, professional, do you have a question?
Thank you very much. Chris has testified on this application. Yes, we heard a couple of questions. Uh, the first, the first series of questions related to a D E P permit that could be required for this project. I'm sure the board understands, we have obtained the letter of interpretation from the D E P that sets forth a wetland buffer, a classification section that has been obtained. We have not yet filed applications for any regulated activities within, uh, the wetlands border or flood hazard area, or riparian buffer. Uh, this project is impacted by all three of, of those, um, restricted areas, as is any project that contains, uh, you know, a, a strip park or a water rate dam. Uh, so we will have to obtain those permits, uh, for any regulated activities that are imposed. And typically, those are done after, after a municipal or board approval, uh, as a matter of resolution compliance, uh, came out of the C D.
What does these concerns?
They will, they will be addressed.
They will be addressed at the, at due time and due process.
Correct.
You know, you didn't do yet, so you realize that, if you don't get it, it's practically over.
Uh, correct. They will all be, uh, like, make an approval. Of course.
Of course.
It is approved. Same for ourselves.
So that, so that if you get the flood zone permit, and if you're gonna get your, I actually said something about it a week.
Uh, riparies. Is it fifth of riparies on long street park, the riparies zone is shown on our land, we do not propose any services to that riparies zone. Riparies zone is a protected area of long street corridors, uh, that, they were enacted, they were enacted as, take a ten or twelve years ago now, by the D E P, that every, uh, every water rate in the state has a riparies zone associated with it. It's just another, uh, another way for the D E P to regulate those things.
Okay.
As you said, Chairman, quickly, the riparies and active this application are going to be renewed by, by the J E P as part of your flood hazard permit as a matter of procedure. Correct.
Okay.
And that's why they pointed out in that L O I, that they make the flood hazard permit when you make an application actually for development.
So you are aware of everything that this needs to mention, and you are working on those issues?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Any other question related to the, uh, the street vacation that is proposed as part of, as part of this application? Quite simply, when these streets were laid out quite some time ago, uh, and these regulations were not in effect, and the location of street corners, or wetlands corners, or riparies over flood hazard areas, were not taken into, into effect when these streets were laid out whenever it was fifty or sixty years ago. Uh, so what we're proposing now is just, is just a, a slight, uh, actually alteration of the existing public streets that will allow, uh, added access to this, to this project. We're proposing a slight, uh, slight vacation of a portion of, of, of the gates avenue, and as reflected on, even though it's a portion of it. And certainly, that, that's really akin to an actual D E P approval, again, which is required, uh, as a condition to be satisfied prior to the, uh, this project, its appropriation, getting signed by the board and a new.
So, so these vacations that are vacated, was this all based on the approval which you got back in the day, what was it? Only one people here should be there. Do you hear it? Do you hear that?
Well, the, the original.
That is not, that is not a metal.
Well, this, this original, this takes, first of all, takes seven, which is the plan that was presented when the irons, uh, was obtained, the original. Use for irons.
This is a plan, it is February twenty seventh of two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, it was in twenty fifteen.
And when do we approve that use for irons?
Uh, Miriam is.
Digging for it.
July in two thousand fifteen.
You got it, okay.
Two years ago. Two years ago. And at that time, I'm sure we gave you the use area constitution that derolls with vacated.
Yes.
And at that time.
July sixth, twenty fifteen.
The atmospheric cap wasn't what it is today. It's, believe me that if you were bringing that application today, in two thousand seventeen, you probably would have never gotten the use for irons. You know? You know, it's, it's, it's a different environment, but however, now that the use for irons is there, we have to live with what happened two years ago.
Agreed.
Is that correct, Chris?
It's absolutely correct, Chairman. This is only here for a site plan application. You've already approved the use, so it's just, uh.
So all the vacating lands and all the grid boxes that we were, could have done and should have done.
The use is there, Chairman.
The use is there, that's, that's irrelevant for today's, for today's application.
Yes.
Because it was done, um, two years ago.
More than two years.
More than three years ago. More than two, more than three years ago. So, so, it is, it is, it is, it is, it is what it is.
Agreed.
Okay. Um, nevertheless, the township is right not to vacate those roads, and this, and this, um, application, the whole application with the use goes.
Well, then we'd have to come back to this board to seek relief.
Agreed.
If, if, we'd have to come back to seek relief, or the application goes down the drain, as you were going to say, yes.
You know, because those.
Moot. Moot means, no moot.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so that answers, uh, a couple of, a couple of questions. And that answers the same question that I had from, that, that Mr. Bender brought up about the traffic. You know, it's, it is what it is. Uh, uh, we approved the use variance for duplexes. Uh, he came and brought in a use variance on nine thousand square feet, which was denied, because we had the right to deny it, and now, he's bringing in a use variance of ten thousand square feet, which I believe didn't what his original plan was, and what we told him, if we want to look at back in the day, we just denied the nine thousand square feet. Again, it would be a different, um, time, maybe we would have looked at it differently, but it is what it is.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just sum up very, very, very quickly.
Before, before you sum up, I just wanted to ask one of my fellow board members, without, uh, embarrassing anyone, without, uh, feel bad.
Uh-oh, Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment, but because you did give a traditional testimony, you should ask anyone in the public, ask some questions.
Okay, let me just finish, you go ahead with that. If anyone has any further questions, before I open the public again, like, um, Chris has just mentioned, um, any questions, Mr. Ball, have others? Go ahead.
Miss Reed, Leeds or Reed?
Leeds.
Leeds. Mentioned that the disturbance of, of, of developing this property is kind of, was a runoff. Is it a positive runoff? Not sure where she's situated, or?
She's not situated, Chris.
Do we minimize her being affected?
Well, I believe, I believe that that comment is, uh, is frankly mistaken. Uh, her property is not contiguous to this application. She does own some property which is adjacent to another application, or the property that, that, uh, Renee Perlo owns, and I believe that she's confused between these two applications. She does not own any property which is contiguous to this application, uh, which we're here for tonight.
Can I talk?
Okay. One second. Okay, anyone else in the board want to say something? Okay, I will reopen the public, ask for our attorney's testimony.
As, as the testimony that was just heard by Mr. McFarlane.
So they have to address the comments strictly to what was just heard?
Correct.
Not to what was heard prior?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. We have four minutes.
Laurie, please?
I, I don't have to, I don't have to do this one.
Oh, my, my property is not in this, uh, whatever, but it is part of this entire, uh, uh, application. Not the application for today, but it was in a prior application. And I was told that by the way they're grading the road in front of my property, it's going to flood my property. There is a very big impaction of riparian and, uh, a creek, the Kettle Creek, and they, why didn't they address that before? When they asked for all their applications, why did they only talk about wetlands? And this application is being built on Gates. They have totally taken away Gates Street, which is a paper street which was needed. It's not there anymore. And it's not right to do this, and I shouldn't have to worry about what's gonna happen to my lot. It's worth over six hundred thousand dollars, and I don't want to have to go to court over it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have just a question for, it was mentioned over here by the chairman, and you confirmed it, so I'm just trying to elaborate on that. I'll just explain what I'm asking, like this, when I ask the question, you should understand. When the use was given, we knew that there's paper streets over there. Now, obviously, as the board did not approve it, that we, they recommend vacating those streets. It's up to the township committee to vacate those streets. If you come in now with an approval that is actually that lots and the houses on the paper street, does the board have to give it to you because they gave you the use already, or it's subject not to be on the paper street?
The board granted the use variance based on a similar plan to this. They saw a plan that had houses on those paper streets. So they understood when they granted the use that there would be, that it was subject to road vacation. So the answer to your question is yes, they have to grant it, they can't deny it, based upon the fact that there are roads that are gonna be vacated. They can just put it in as a condition that it will be subject to the township vacating those roads. Township can decide not to vacate those roads, which is what we discussed before, and then the applicant is stuck, can't build the project.
What I'm trying to add, I'm, I'm sorry for it.
No problem.
When the, the way I understand when the board gives a use is like they change the zone. Like till now, it was R twenty, they changed it to R ten A or R seven five, and they giving you that, those standards. That means you could build townhomes, duplexes, or they could say is on ten thousand square feet, they could put a use whichever way they want. But I don't think, when the board gives you use vans, they give it to you, you could build on the paper street. They could, they must probably gave you the use, but not saying They could, they most probably gave you the use, but not saying is that I'm giving you the use, and you could build on it subject to the site plan. And if the site plan is not vacated by when the time of the site plan comes, or the board could say is, we're giving it subject to that, and they will still give it to subject, they could still do it. They could do it now. But my question is, does the use variants that they got force the board to give them the approval now, and they can't object to those paper streets? To build on the paper streets? Do you understand my question?
I understand your question. Again, I'm going to reiterate what I said before, which is that at the time when the board granted the use, they saw a plan that was very similar to this one in the sense that the lots were smaller, were smaller, but they showed houses on the paper streets. They approved the use subject to that. So at this point...
Could the board deny it based on...
Could the board?
I'm asking you, they gave the use. Could they deny it based on it's now on paper streets? Because could be two years from now, if two years before, it was not so important, the grid in the paper street, and could be now it's more important. And now it came up that there's a big traffic problem because of the vacancy. And then two years, two years ago, I was not here to tell you that there's a problem. Now I'm here. So once it brought up that problem, and we know is that the township, let's put it this way, the township committee, when they look at it, I'll tell you where the problem is. You could say is the board doesn't have to deal with the paper streets as the township committee. What happens in the past, I saw coming the vacation for the township. The township says is the zoning board looked at it, it's a good idea to do it, because you see, they approved it on the paper streets. They say the same thing with the planning board. Therefore is, if you guys approved it, that means as you recommended vacating those streets. So it's technically a recommendation from the zoning board to vacate it. They did a mistake in the past, doesn't mean they have to do it now. My question is, are they limited when they're voting now? Could they deny this application? Everything is, will be sparkly clean, just in the fact is that it's on paper streets? Could they deny it?
They heard your testimony, they can consider it. I don't have to answer that question. They heard your testimony.
I didn't ask, I asked from the professional, but could be he doesn't have to answer it. I'll defer to the attorney.
Mr. Klein, the board granted the use variants two years ago. They can grant any approval they want, subject to vacating paper streets by the township, or they can say they can grant the approval without the paper streets.
So they could deny this application now based on it's on the paper streets?
Board can do whatever it wants. Their testimony, their determination, the use is not going away. The use is there. It was approved for duplexes two years ago.
Correct. I'm not asking them to deny the use. I'm asking is if they could deny this application based that the units exist now on the paper streets, and it's subject to the township vacating, and the township could look at it as...
Subdue the township committee.
They could do that, or they could deny it because it's on paper streets. I'm asking, question.
They cannot, mind.
They cannot?
Township, the board has granted the approval. The use variant is subject to vacating the streets. That is a initial approval. We can't go back on that now and say, well, if the streets aren't there, you don't give your approval.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else seeing now the post of the public, and I will therefore now get promotion for...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Talking about the paper streets over there. So I don't know the names of the streets, but there's a street that Lot 10 and Lot 9 is going to be on top of.
Correct.
Mike Graham, when you...
No, Lot 9 and 10 are not on any vacated or proposed streets, proposed vacated streets.
One, those are not, those are not in there. Right, this street over here, if it gets...
You have to speak into microphone.
I'm just identifying this.
Please refer forward to A-7.
I'm just trying to get around the zone. In relation to this, yeah, no, this is exactly the same. So Clinton Avenue is where on this, it's down over here.
Down here.
And this is that other street. So, correct. So in theory, this is the street that goes to Chestnut. This street goes to...
I need a mic, and I need to hear through, tell me what you're doing over there.
Okay. Clinton Avenue goes to Chestnut on the paper, even though it's not paved. The other one, Gates, goes to...
Gates will go towards New Hampshire, I don't think there's all like two New Hampshire but it goes...
But there's apartment buildings in the way, so it's a dead end anyway.
Correct.
And it's within, and it's within the wetlands corridor. Yeah.
Most of that is within a wetlands corridor.
That's correct.
Yeah, you can't put Gates through that because of the big wetlands.
Yep, correct. Again, part of my earlier testimony, that the original layout did not take wetlands
or any environmental restrictions into account originally.
And Mr. Rose, when we initially got the use variants, I don't think you were sitting on this board, but we went through the environmental in detail and why those roads are being vacated. There are a lot of constraints in there, there are streams running through and wetlands running through that those roads would not be able to cross, and that would be the justification for granting it. And all of that was presented as testimony before Mr. Klein was around and when you weren't here, but the rest of the board members at the time when they granted the use variants did have all of that testimony at hand.
There's no vacated streets on the original one.
Trying to clarify something. So, one other question. Lot 3, which was currently not going to be developed, is your find amenable to leaving that as open space not to be developed?
Doesn't want to leave it as open space. If you want to keep it attached to the lot adjacent to it, we can keep it attached to the lot adjacent to it. If that makes the board happy, that's fine.
If you keep it to the lot adjacent to it, then you have to come back to get a...
That's fine.
So they are okay with merging Lot 2 and Lot 3?
Yes.
Original application does not have any streets vacated.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We have to move to the public.
I have a question.
Sit down and close the...
Didn't we close to the public?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant is amenable to whichever way the board, the applicant does not want any restriction on that lot for open space. If the board wants to append it to, append Lot 2 and 3 together, that's fine. If the board would prefer to, if the board, you know, wants to leave it the way that the applicant had proposed with a separate 10,000 square foot lot, the applicant is fine with that as well.
I have a question for the MP.
Sure.
I know this question came up originally, and it's just been a while, and I just want to clarify. There's a lot, based on the geography, there's a lot of dips along this hole, and there's a lot of retaining walls, and we discussed what type of fencing would be on top of that with the use.
I think we discussed it last hearing.
I would like to address children, you know, both...
Yes, we did indicate that fencing would be provided for any retaining walls in order to provide, you know, primary safety for...
Just to give you the average height for mine, you know, the, you know, both, I guess, lots, more things for being that low.
They're about five, they're about five feet or so. And then we have a fence on top, you know, fence on top of that for fall, we're proposing a chain link. We're proposing a chain link fence for fall protection.
So my concern is that a chain link fence, child can climb, and therefore, if you're on a chain, it's not a good drop.
Well, we would provide whatever kind of fence the board felt was appropriate. We propose a chain link fence because I think it's important to maintain some visibility. There are some wetlands and some vegetation behind these units, so we do want those residents to have the benefit of the view of that property. You know, the other alternative could be a solid fence if the board felt that was more appropriate. My opinion is a chain link fence is appropriate, but the board certainly has, has the ability to dictate a, to dictate a fence. If we put up a, put up a solid vinyl fence, then we're blocking, you know, the view of the wetlands corridor.
Can we ask for a chain fence with, they have a couple of different types of...
Then you won't be able to see from...
Well, we could use a, we could use a small mesh. We could specify a small mesh, which is much more difficult for children to climb.
What is the fence height?
Four feet.
Could that be increased?
It could, it could. If the board felt it was appropriate, we of course would agree to that.
Six feet with the smaller... We just said that there's going to be a six-foot fence, we are the retaining, we're going to be, and it's going to be a small mesh.
Okay, that makes sense.
And a small mesh, I think it's about an inch, small mesh, something like, something like that.
That's a good idea.
And they're much harder, much harder for children to climb. You can't get your feet in the mesh as much.
And the line we upgraded, is that a...
I'm starting with the asking.
The what?
The what, I'm sorry.
The...
The irrigation, whatever.
The stone, all that.
Yeah, one-third stone.
Yeah, those are standard. I'm trying to get attention to interrupt. You gave me an opportunity to speak, now you turn and I do a job, so just hold on one second.
Okay.
One-third standard, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Irrigation, got it.
Okay, fine. Anyone else want to make your statement before?
It's muted. We've said it so many times.
Let's go, thank you.
I want to say one thing. Regarding the traffic again on New Hampshire Avenue, of course, most of the traffic, there's a traffic coming from Towns River and out of the area that's holding up New Hampshire Avenue. And the people don't stop, there's a grid box there, and they don't stop. As a result, they're not stopping whether it's one car or 15 cars, okay? The traffic not stopped from there, where there's a red light, that's what's causing the traffic on Chestnut Street. If the people would adhere to stopping with the red light on Route 70, it's red, and they would stop at the intersection, there would be an opening where there's one car or 15 cars will be able to get through New Hampshire Avenue and turn. Just like what happens on Route 9 and Chestnut Street. That's the backup on that area, not necessarily you have homeowners coming in and out.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Can I make my question?
No.
No.
No, it's closed.
I want a motion to approve this application.
I have motion for May Gelli.
With a fencing of six inches, six foot in the small room, and Lot 2 and 3.
Are Lot 2 and 3 going to be combined?
No.
Because I've interrupted twice.
No, I don't see the advantage for them at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion, May Gelli, to approve with the chain link fence that's not merging the two left together. Can I have a second? I have a second with Judah Rubiye. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Haustra.
No.
Mr. Rubiye.
Yes.
Mr. Inga.
Yes.
Mr. Quelch.
No.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Haustra.
Yes. Good night and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, let me give this application, yeah? That's great.
All right, let me move forward. Bill number 4033, New Jersey American Water.
For the record, Neil O'Brien from the law firm of Archer and Greiner for the applicant, New Jersey American Water Company. New Jersey is, American is, as you know, a public utility. It's a water company, provides water service and sewer service to parts of the township. This property is along Oak Street, it's Block 1157, Lot 1. It's a location of a well station and water treatment station, of course, part of the applicant's public utility water production and distribution system. The property is located in an OR 10A zoning district. It was previously in an OR 40-20 cluster zone, but was rezoned just a couple of years ago to OR 10A. Notwithstanding that rezoning, public utilities are not permitted within this zoning district by ordinance. The well station and treatment station, of course, are existing facilities, but because they are a lawfully existing non-conforming use, in order to expand or significantly alter those facilities, we need a D2 use variance for the expansion of a non-conforming use. Among the approvals, among the improvements that are being proposed, which are relatively minor, is a second water treatment building, associated water mains, a sewer lateral to serve the new building, repaving or replacement of the existing driveway, some additional landscaping. There is a ground-mounted antenna on the property which provides communications between what you'll hear tonight or other well stations in the vicinity, and the Oak Street Station, and the applicant's operations center. It's, again, it's remote operation, it's unmanned, but the new antenna will have a height of 65 feet, while 35 feet is the maximum building height permitted by ordinance. Communications antennas are permitted in the M2 zone, subject to certain standards. We're not, of course, in the M2 zone, we're in the OR 10A zone, so again, use variance approval for the entire facility will also include the antenna. I have just three exhibits up there this evening, if you can see them. We've got exhibit, which I'll call A1, is the aerial photograph to your right, which is an aerial photograph of just the well station property. A2, which is immediately beneath it, is a rendered site plan showing the proposed facilities. And then A3, which we're going to refer to as a overall project aerial photograph, which shows the remote well stations that I just spoke about, and will enable our engineer to tie this all together and tell you exactly what this is, project-wise. So I have just two witnesses tonight, if I could, if I could have them sworn in for purposes of efficiency, if you both step forward, give your name, your professional qualification for the record.
Carolyn Zabrowski, professional licensed engineer at Mount McDonald in Freehold, New Jersey.
Spell your last name. Sir, let's get the names first.
Andrew Thomas, T-H-O-M-S, licensed professional planner.
Can you repeat your name, you swear from the testified truth in this matter, both with the board?
I do.
Would the board like to hear Ms. Zabrowski's professional qualifications?
Yes, please.
Sure. Just qualify for the...
A little bit of history about yourself, so qualify you now, we're...
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I have a master's degree from Rutgers University in civil and environmental engineering.
How many years?
How many years have I had a master's degree? I've been, five, and I've been employed at Mount McDonald for 11 years.
Okay, so you're an engineer for five, and employed there for 11?
Well, I've been working as an engineer in training and then become a professional engineer subsequently.
You've had primary responsibility for the design of this site? You're familiar with the design of the site?
Yes, I'm the project manager for the site.
Does anyone have any questions for... No? Everyone's okay with it? Are you guys okay?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
So Ms. Zabrowski, if you could, starting there with A1, and I'll bring it over closer if it's easier for you, just describe the property to the board. This station's been out here since the early 90s, right?
Yes. So the existing site is very well covered and buffered by existing trees, and there is an existing chemical building that's located on the site, and there's also two wells located on site right there, right?
So the facility's involved in both the production and the treatment of water.
That's correct.
Excuse me, before we go into the details of the whole site, I know that you're in well, I just wanted my mind to get a, where exactly this is located, okay? Get a mind, just so I can get a sense of direction where you're, for example. If I'm coming down Oak Street, you have the unapproved Vermont Street, right?
Right.
And right, if you travel all of the unapproved, deep in the woods over there, is that where these wells are?
The wells are over there, yes. Between Essex Street and...
Right, Essex, right.
Yes.
So you're right deep in there, the wooden anthropuses that are there?
Essex is here.
Right.
And Oak is up here.
Right.
And then this is Vermont.
That's the unapproved Vermont?
Yes, and then three wells.
Got it. On the other side of all the new school, let me just go.
There's a new school up here, here.
Right.
Is this one?
Right, okay.
There's...
The baseball field is on the other side of Essex Street?
Yes. Down there.
Right over there. That's, that's over there, so that's the, that's what I see whenever I want to cut through line, or, no, I drive on it unapproved.
Yes.
So, that's what I see.
Yes.
So, I'm in there.
Yes. You, you probably see fences, but yes.
Right, fences, I'm big to that.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
So, the property itself, the well station, it significantly exceeds the minimum lot size and the Balkan area criteria for the OR 10A zoning district, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, there should be very little impact on surrounding properties from the minor development that's proposed here?
Yes.
Let's get into specifics about what exactly is proposed. If you could, refer to A2, the site plan, and just orient the board to, to what exactly is happening on, on this property.
Sure. The, there's a new building that is proposed to be constructed, and I'm going to point just to your, where? Up, in this location here.
Want to show something, so...
Can you see?
Can, can you see?
Yeah. So, that's the new building, and that's existing. So, that's okay. The existing building will remain in service while the new building is being constructed, and both buildings will be used for the future production and treatment of the water.
And we're proposing a replacement emergency generator, right? Is, is that correct?
Yes, there is an existing natural gas emergency generator located in the chemical building, and we're planning to remove that and install a larger generator that will provide backup power to the existing and new buildings and the two wells at the site in case of emergency power outages, et cetera. The new generator will be located inside of the new building, in the northwest corner of the building.
Approximately how far is that from adjacent properties?
The new generator will be located approximately 100 feet from the nearest property line, and, again, will be located inside the building, so we don't anticipate there being noise issues with the, the emergency generator.
Will comply with DEP regulations?
Yes.
Okay. There's also naturally associated water mains. Could you orient the board on site to, to what's being done?
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Could you orient the board to, to what's being done in terms of new water mains, the new sewer main, the landscaping?
Sure. So, there are several underground existing water mains to tie the existing wells into the buildings. We're reconfiguring some of the mains located on the site, and the way that the entire system works is that the two wells at the site and the two, there are two wells at this site. Three of the wells on the remote sites, and, thank you. So, these two wells and three of these wells all require this additional treatment that's going to be located in the treatment building. Well, number 18, which is also located here, are, is drilled into a deeper aquifer, which doesn't require the level of treatment that the other five wells do. So, we're planning to install a dedicated raw water main for well 18 from this site through Vermont Avenue onto the subject property to bypass this new treatment that we need to provide.
And these other, the wells on the other properties will use the existing one?
Yes.
What's the purpose of the, the new antenna that's being proposed?
The, well, the existing antenna and the raised new antenna provide communications between the three remote well sites to the Oak Street Station site, and that in turn goes to the Massachusetts Avenue Tank Site, and clear line of sight is required to maintain connections between all of those remote areas.
And American Water performed a, a sound survey and determined that 65 feet is, is the minimum acceptable height, correct?
Yes. I'm sorry, not a sound, a radio study.
A radio study, thank you. We're not talking about increasing water output here, or water production capability, but we are talking about an increase in improvements to water quality, correct?
That is correct. The new treatment that's being provided in the new building will provide the quality that will allow American Water to use all of the water from all six of these wells.
And, and American Water's standards are more stringent than federal and JDEP standards, is that correct?
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Zabrowski?
Yes, if I may jump. What is the, why do they have to talk to each other? What do you have to tell us?
The, a lot of the, the chemical feed is, is based on flow, and the flow coming from each well pump needs to be, the information needs to be sent, a signal to tell them which, how fast to pace the pumps. It's just one example of, of why they need to.
I have another question. Do you have any talk to the future to put up one of these big water tanks? Will this lead to one of those water tanks?
An elevated water tank?
Yeah, like CO all over town?
No.
Big liquid group all over town?
Not, not at, not at these sites. That I'm aware of.
Is that going to lead to there?
Not that I know of.
What's that?
Any, any water tank plans at these sites? No.
From the bottom of the picture, the pumping station there, all the way up to the top, all that property is owned by the water company?
No. The, the lateral that Ms. Zabrowski, or the, the main that Ms. Zabrowski mentioned will actually go in a public street. So, public utilities obviously have very expan, all of them, no matter whether it's electric, whether it's water, whether it's sewer, very, very expansive facilities throughout a municipality. The, the placement of pipes and, and other facilities in public streets is part of the utilities' overall consent or contract with the township. They don't need to come before you every time they're doing something like that, because they'd be here every time you have a meeting. But what is subject to, to your jurisdiction is the facilities themselves, like the well stations, like a sewage pumping station, like an electrical substation, are all subject to the use provisions in your ordinance. So, the placement and the pipe, the placement of the pipe in the public street, sorry, that wasn't your question, huh?
Where the land in between can be developed?
Only the three lots in yellow on the right side of Vermont are owned by New Jersey American Water.
So, where the other, will be developed at some point?
Subject to, subject to your zoning ordinance. Whatever your ordinance says can, can happen out there.
And there'd be additional setbacks and so forth, the requirements? Where, where does your property's beginning end on each one of these pumping stations?
The yellow outline...
That is the, the outline of each property.
Oh, okay, nice.
So, again, the, the well station is all the way to the top. The other three properties, all they've got is a well itself.
How far away is this location therefore?
I don't have an exact...
The math is because of the communication and tenant is certainly required, is that taken into consideration?
Yes, we're below the, the height requirement.
What, what is the current height of your antenna?
25 feet.
And you're going...
To 65 feet.
What, what is, what do you project that, that you want to put that line from the north way on the south, you know, building? Because the township, I believe, that's where it's to actually pave that road. Township has plans to pave, assuming we wanted that, to get it up...
Ahead of the paving would be preferable.
Yeah, get it up after, you know...
Sure.
Right.
Going to...
You need to speak up.
Do you have any idea when that's going to be?
The project is slated for construction, I believe, starting November, December, so we anticipate the project to be finished by July of 2018.
And why the expansion now, is there...
It's, it's just for water quality. There's really no expansion to the capacity. The, New Jersey American Water has, has constant monitoring, and they noticed an increasing trend in one contaminant that's regulated by the DEP, so they are providing this new treatment to prevent the additional increase and exceedance over the maximum contaminant level.
How wide of a zone is, is this, these wells serviced?
They...
Because that area is having tremendous growth.
Absolutely. The water that leaves the Oak Street Station goes into the Lakewood Distribution System and is, combined with, there's several other, several, two other treatment plants located in Lakewood that also supplement the capacity for the area. So, it's basically throughout the western portion of Lakewood Township.
Regarding the tower?
Yes.
Just, you know, is there a higher level of RF radiation that's already admitted from this tower on its side, or from this tower that's existing there right now?
It's a, a standard radio antenna. It's going to be the same technology, just at a higher height.
So, the height, would that, would that release more to the area around? The concern is, as you mentioned, that there's possibility of development around this area sometime in the future, how it would affect the people that are living.
I am not a radio expert, so...
Sorry?
I'm not a radio expert, so I don't know the specific issues that may occur with radio waves, but, so I don't think I can answer that question.
Ms. Zabrowski, the, the application of complies with all the DDP regulations, is that correct?
Yes, we've received CAFRA individual permit, we've received our safe drinking water permit, soil erosion, all of those have been received, and I believe we're submitted to the board.
If we'll be able to forward another question. I know you mentioned it, but I want to know too, where this antenna is going to be? I didn't want to ask, I believe we have a ordinance that says that if the antenna is 65 feet high, the antenna should be 65 feet radius of property, also if it falls...
Fall zone.
Correct.
If it falls on your property and not on a neighboring house or a neighboring property. So, are you with that? Are you with that?
Yeah, we do comply with that.
The pole is, is right here.
So, you got 65 feet circumference all around?
So, for a frame of reference, this is about a...
Got it. Okay, so all around, you have about, you'd say about 100 feet around that antenna?
Definitely.
All around, so it falls on one of your property?
Yes. Any questions?
Okay, anyone else?
I've got a little testimony, just because we've got a D variance, I'd like to have our planner just put some testimony on the record regarding the positive and negative criteria. Mr. Thomas, I think you've appeared before this board on, on many occasions.
Yes, I have.
So, just talking through the, the two variances that we're asking for, we've got use for the facility, we've got height for the antenna.
That's right.
What's, what's your assessment of those variances as a, as a planner?
So, yeah, we have the, the use variance is the, the D2 use variance, and that's for the expansion of existing non-conforming use, which is already there. And then the, the C2 variance would be for the communications antenna, and variance, that variance is required because it's an accessory structure rather than a principal structure. So, that's why you need a C2 instead of a D, D variance. So, to go through the positive criterion, Oak Street Station, it's an essential component of the public utilities' use. In my opinion, it can be considered an inherently beneficial use in terms of the municipal land use law, thereby presumptively satisfies the positive criteria. In addition, the requested use variance approval will promote the general welfare, in that the property is particularly suited for the location of the existing Oak Street Station, and also satisfies the positive criteria as well. The, the variance for the height, for the antenna, would provide significant benefits to the property, to the surrounding community, also promoting the purposes of zoning, as recognized by the MLUL. The benefits of granting the requested variance would substantially outweigh any minor detriment. The property has historically adequately contained the use and operation. It's strategically located within the New Jersey American Water's Lakewood Township Distribution System. The existing facilities cannot be easily relocated. The station serves thousands of residents, serves industrial users as well as commercial uses. The property is ideally suited for the production and treatment of water to meet continuing increase in demand. The property, as you heard, is significantly exceeds the size requirement. It's 4.1 acres. Usually, these, these properties are smaller, but this one's, is quite large, so there shouldn't be any detriment to the public good. Particularly suitability for the property means that the, the grant of the use variance approval will promote the general welfare. First, the purposes of improvement will enhance treatment and production capabilities. The increase in antenna height will improve the effectiveness of the recording and communications between Oak Street and the operations center. So, therefore, it would meet purpose A of the municipal land use law, which is promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare. It would meet purpose B, and that is to secure safety from fire, flood, and panic and other natural and man-made disasters. It would help and maintain the reliability and resiliency of the water supply for firefighting, for medical, for other essential services. It would meet purposes G and M. Purpose G is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Purpose M, a more efficient use of, of the land. And finally, meet purpose E, and that's promoting establishments of appropriate population densities and concentrations, because it provides adequate quality and quantity of water supply in response to any increase in demand. The grant of the use variance would provide significant benefits without any detriment to the public good, so it's not only inherently beneficial, but it's also particularly suitable. And then finally, for the negative criteria, it generates little or no permanent traffic. There would be limited, if any, impacts to lighting, noise, vibrations, dust, odors, or any similar effects. The station, again, has historically existed on the property without any detriment to the public good. It provides an essential utility service. As you just heard, the, the antenna is going to be 65 feet, it will be securely anchored. There's sufficient area providing that fall zone in the unlikely event that it would, would be damaged or, or would fall. So, for these reasons, the property will continue to serve as the location for the Oak Street Station without any detriment to the public good. There should not be any substantial impairment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. And finally, because no additional water treatment station should be necessary in the same neighborhood, the proposed facilities would not interfere with the continued use of adjacent surrounding residential and community properties. And for all those reasons, the positive and negative criteria should be deemed to be satisfied with, by the board, in my opinion.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. That's all we have for you in terms of direct testimony, Mr. Chairman. We're here, obviously, to answer any questions that you have or that your professionals have.
Okay. I don't think you guys have any questions. Any, one more, somebody further question?
No, no. Is, is the, are your areas fenced off? The first one is fenced off by elders, the school, right outside, so the children can get in.
Yes, all of the, all four sites have chain link fences currently.
Okay, wouldn't have children, wouldn't have, like, they just go to the new school high access, that are like, so the children would be able to wander right to your...
Oh, absolutely not. Everything is secure. New Jersey American Water is, is very safety oriented, and they have, have...
A lot of...
Absolutely.
Security is always a concern, not, not just for folks entering the property, but also for the integrity of what's inside. Security is always an issue with public utilities.
Like, what about lighting? It's going to be, you know, either, I'm sure there will be, even more, is it going to be indirect lighting, or is it going to be overhead lighting?
The only lighting proposed for the new building is going to be located physically on the building. There will be, I believe, two lights on the south side, two on the north, and two on each side, and they will all be individual light switches, so it can be turned on and off manually, individually, so...
They'll be turned on as you...
Correct. I believe the only one...
Is there security lighting if somebody walks in and the light kicks on?
There is not.
Okay.
Because it's a secure site.
Secure, unfortunately, we have the question of security terrorism.
I can't speak to that, because I don't know the specifics of New Jersey American Waters.
Anything secure from terrorism these days?
It's absolutely a thing to think about. Absolutely.
Okay. I, I don't have any further questions. I will, the public member of the board... I would like to...
Wait, wait, wait. I have what to say.
Do you swear or affirm the testifying treatment matter before the board?
I affirm. First of all, I have to be very careful.
Again.
Shloem McLean. I'm not giving you the address because I'm afraid, because I'm a customer of them. So if I say anything wrong, they might shut me off. So I have to be very careful. I just have, before I make my statement, I have a few questions. Any of the professionals that want to answer is okay. The reason why you're coming to this board is only for that one site?
Yes.
The other site doesn't require you to come to the board?
No. There'll be no, the only construction to be done is on that lower site where it's just a water main. The existing sites have no significant construction.
In that site, which one? You're talking lower, you mean the top?
This, there's a water main. This is the one that we've come to the board.
That one you don't need to come to the board?
No.
The low one. Okay, the second thing that I have, when you're doing the antenna, are you able to put other companies, like Verizon or any other companies, on that antenna, or it will be restricted only to your company? Because you're going to have a big antenna, you could make money.
No. Can...
It's only for internal communication between the...
I understand. Once they have the...
Between the wells and the control center for New Jersey American Water.
It's either a telecommunications tower, it's...
Right. It's a...
Could you technically put on?
No.
Because it's a mast, it's not a tower.
Okay. Last question. Why is there no sidewalks?
So basically... No sidewalks.
I don't think the board should make fun of me over here, because I think this, that neighborhood is becoming very high dense. You have Oak Street corridor right next to it on Vine. You have all the schools over there, and this is a safety issue. So I think is that if, because there's no sidewalks over there, proposed in this plan, if somebody gets injured, I don't think this is a joke. I'm not talking about killed. The male listener will come and pick up the blood, but I'm not talking about him now. I'm talking about sidewalks is a safety issue. And I'm asking, why is there no sidewalks in such a type of development over here?
We were not proposing any significant construction outside of the fenced-in area. I can't really speak to the sidewalk issue.
There's an ordinance in the township. Anytime you do any structure, any improvement on the property, you have to put in sidewalks. And you could see over here, there's a sidewalk running right over here. Okay, there's a sidewalks all over here. This is no sidewalks, so you're going to have, the whole Oak Street has sidewalks, it just got, Vine Street has sidewalks.
Mr. Klein, they're not proposing any new development. All they are doing is raising the tower. Raising the entire, it's no new development.
Again, I'm just reading the ordinance.
And what he says is for new development, it's not new development. All they are doing is increasing the size of the tower. I'm calling the tower the size of the pole. There's no new, there's a new building to approach.
I hear. Okay, so accordingly to the township attorney, you don't have to put in sidewalks, but you're still coming in with a D-variance, and the board could turn you down. So my question now is to the board, even though...
It's inherently beneficial use. Everybody here likes clean water, so what they're proposing is going to help clean water from the Lakewood Township and residents.
So in your opinion, the board cannot ask them to put in sidewalks? They cannot deny this?
It's not, it's not a requirement of the ordinance. There's no new development being proposed. So in my opinion, no, I don't believe the board has the authority to require as...
So...
It's not required under the ordinance that sidewalks would be imposed.
So let me just, to my statement now. Okay, my statement is as follows. These guys claim that this development over here, whatever they're doing, is going to help...
Everybody who likes water.
Water is going, and the other side is, from them developing this property more and letting them develop this property will be a danger to the community around it, because there's no sidewalks. I don't know if that argument will be good for you or not. I don't, but I could just tell you one thing is, be very careful when you give legal opinions on safety of kids, because if that legal opinion could be bent a little bit, and sidewalks could go in, and a child gets injured, because there's no sidewalks, and that legal opinion might have been flexible a little bit, you're dealing with children over here, and there's a lot of schools in that neighborhood, plus there's a big residential, almost 500 units plus basements, right next to it. And the township was very careful to ask everybody to put in sidewalks. No sidewalks over there is a danger, so, and it's a high-dense development over there. So again, I'm just pleading to the board, and I'm pleading to the attorney, that don't let legal come in with the safety of kids. You might not like me, but this is, sidewalks is a... And I just want to, you don't have to answer me, Terry. Do you agree that the ordinance does not require them to put in sidewalks?
I'm not aware of any requirement. There's no development that they're proposing that would be served by sidewalks. If they were putting in homes in this area, I can see the argument. They're not introducing development.
So let me ask you, I'm just, I finished my statement just to ask a question for New Jersey American Water. You're so concerned about safety of the customers, safety for children, safety of the kids running in, running out, and there is an issue with safety over there as far as sidewalks. And New Jersey American Water charges a lot of money, so they have a lot of money. Is it possible, you guys, whatever you heard over here, put things aside and just put in sidewalks?
We're not proposing that. We understand that there's going to be some paving projects out here. We'll cooperate in whatever happens out here with the township's long-term plans, but we're not proposing any sidewalk as part of this application.
So you're saying no to put in, in, and Vine Street and Oak Street, that there's no proposed? The only thing that is proposed is on Vermont, and that I agree with you. But as Oak Street, that is already existing road, and it's a county road, and you're talking about Vine Street that is developed already, you don't want to put in sidewalks, and you're not consider about safety of the children of Lakewood?
We answered your question, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the public? Seeing like to have a motion or...
Just to clarify, you're not, you're not eligible to put in sidewalks?
We prefer not to. We prefer not to.
I motion to approve the application.
I say, I motion to...
Yes.
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 Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, good night, and good luck.
Thank you all.
Time is now 10 minutes before 11:00, and I want to take one small application, 4083, Mayor Sead.
Mr. Chairman, just by, to remind the board that correspondence matters.
I know, I know. I want to, I want to... I like this application, because it's a real, a real five-minute application, so that...
Yeah, and Mr. Sead, Mr. Sead said he would let one of the cherry somersets go in front of him, because he thought they were...
So then, if, well, if you're not taking them, can we carry it before you start, Mr. Sead, so I can go home?
Yes.
Thank you.
4035. 4035, we're going to carry for, for October 2nd.
I'll call Benny and ask.
Okay, all of them. Motion, carry 4035, Black Time. Motion by Mr. Gross, second by Mr. Rubieth, and a second here, roll call please.
Mr. Yelly?
Yes.
And Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, 4041. More than I think, I'm not going to take you either tonight. Can we table that to October 2nd? Motion from who is that? 40 Gross, and second, Mayor Rubieth, Mr. Judy Rubieth.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, it's a... Can you put in the money?
Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Okay, fine, so then, whoever, whoever has one of those applications that we just tabled for 10 seconds?
Good night.
That will be heard over here 10 seconds, October 2nd. Mayor Sead, is he here?
Yes.
Okay, woman before it continues. Time of body, do you have an answer for me? Oh, what time, sorry, it was...
Yes, yes. The answer was they can make the buildings four feet shorter, that would allow a sidewalk...
The problem is that, I need, we need to look at it again. So let's continue that discussion, please bring it up, so that we could see that. So we're back to 4041, 403940, twice. I want to make the house smaller, so that it doesn't duck into the streets of the side of the garden, so that it can look somewhat normal.
Just for those that are here, just want to confirm what the chairman said. Appeal number 4035, appeal number 4041, have been carried over to our next meeting of October 2nd.
Okay.
So anybody waiting for that, we'll be back here October 2nd. Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to, we're back to 4029, I'm sorry...
We're back to 3948.
When we spoke about that parking lot, that was, the house was dumped right into the, into that, into that parking lot, without anything, and he just kind of asked to make the house smaller, so we could have four feet buffer between the parking lot and the front door, so that we do, so he said, I didn't say four feet, he said, I said, house smaller, and he recommended four feet.
Well, we already have like 10 feet from the parking lot to the front door, but there's steps there. So what this would do is, the steps would come down onto a four-foot wide sidewalk. So you'd have the area on the side for some plantings.
Well, that's kind of weird. We're in...
In this area here, the steps come down, it's 10 feet, the steps come to the parking lot, so you have all that other area in there. We make the buildings four foot shorter, all that moves this way, so all these areas next to the steps are available for, which is a pretty typical situation.
Yeah, we put a monument stone in there. Here, on, a little monument.
How many feet are from the curb to the home?
It's a, from the curb, well... From the curb to the, the front of the building is about 10 feet.
Now?
Now, now. It'll be 14 feet when we make the buildings four feet shorter.
So we just want to, we want to approve this application with a nice beautiful parking lot, with four feet, or five feet, well, four feet, 14.
Four feet.
Four feet plus?
Four feet plus the other 10 where the steps go to the front door.
So we're up to make the motion, you guys are going to the hospital, so we can make a little bit of a sidewalk. I don't think, I don't think I would, I would need a four-foot sidewalk. I think it's the regular two-foot sidewalk, because I would have to look greedy in front of the house. Just something, but nevertheless...
Two-foot sidewalk, Terry?
How are you looking? One thing, a three-foot?
Minimum is four.
Minimum is four, something internal like this, just a little walkway?
Two-foot sidewalk.
I've never, I've never seen to do a sidewalk.
I've never seen it two, but I've seen three, so if we do three, that'd give us an extra foot of grass.
Just somebody has... What we understanding is private.
Yes.
Oh, right, you got 10 feet on that. Okay, fine. Okay? Okay?
You can give many people.
Okay, and I think I heard before discussion that they would like to see a single door in the back, not a double sliding door, so no porters come up here later, as I forgot.
I...
So we're going to have a regular patio with the stairs going down, so no one can think the builder ripped me off, and I didn't know, I didn't know that yet.
Yes, but...
And those shrubs from the curb, not, not high enough to block, but it's high enough that nobody drives over.
Yes.
Okay, so, anything else that I missed?
Why do you say, wait, where did you go?
Because I don't want to see that.
Wait, excuse me, I'm...
Good?
You're all talking at once.
I said, because I don't want to see his neck over there.
Yeah, if you insist on steps on the patio, so if it was a sliding door, it would be a... If you make a patio, you're not a... You need to demand steps. I can understand that.
Because it's very hard to put steps in front of a sliding door.
Yeah, but this sliding door is much nicer for the family to use, to back.
Okay.
Well, I didn't discuss that before CO was issued, that it had issued.
Yes.
Yes.
And the steps. No boards across it, no, yes.
There should be some notes in the language, resolution that...
Well, if the patio is in, nobody's going to redo it.
He's getting credit from the building.
Yes. If you leave grass and don't put steps, you, yeah.
Okay.
Well, what's shown on the plan, which is about 10 feet from the, was 10 feet from the curb to the front door, we're adding four feet, so we're taking four feet off the buildings. The buildings will all be four feet smaller than they were. We're going to have a three-foot sidewalk along the curb, and the rest of the area will be landscaped.
I'll make the motion.
I just, I'm running as fast as I can, so let me just read back what I have, the portions made, if that's all right? All right. It's going to be, the patio is going to be installed prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued.
The O.C.
steps. And stairs. Single break. Shrubs along the sidewalk. The buildings themselves are going to be reduced in size by four feet in order to make way for a three-foot sidewalk.
Yes.
And we want to add that length 14 feet from the beginning of the parking lot to the beginning of the house.
Thank you.
I would put a minimum of 33, like one, four feet.
A minimum of three.
Right.
And then a single door from the back.
Sidewalk, sidewalk.
You want that as a condition?
Yeah. Sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
And the shrubs are from the sidewalk?
The shrubs are along the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're low, right?
And there are no shrubs, got it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from 40 Gross, another second. Second, from Mr. Inker, and a second here, roll call please.
Mr. Yelly?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And Allen, Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you, and good luck. Okay, let me just take real quickly, Mayor Sead?
4038.
4038. Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, go to the, you have to read on the record.
You have to do six variables of approval, let me do a irregular shape deck, that's called a 14, it's a 20-foot video setback.
Sorry. Mr. Flannery, do you swear affirm the testifying treatment matter before the board?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer and professional planner. The applicant has a house with a deck, and the deck goes four feet, the triangular portion. I have two exhibits, A1 and A2. A1 shows the property on a T.A.R. road, it's a unusual-shaped lot. A2 shows the house, the deck is in green, the pink part of it is where it's four feet over the line. The applicant applied for a building permit, he got his building permit, he put it up. They didn't realize that that corner of it was over the line. He's here asking for approval to leave the deck up.
Is it over the parking lot?
No, over the setback line.
Setback line a little bit.
That little pink part is four feet at the biggest part, over the required...
It's a 20-foot setback.
The required 20-foot setback line, yes.
Well, how many feet is it, you have to set back? Four feet?
16. 16. Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Can I just say something?
Yes, go ahead. Our...
The plan came in for zoning without a deck. The plan showed the deck. We built the deck.
The required 20-foot setback line, yes.
How many feet is the actual setback?
Four feet?
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Can I just say something?
Yes, go ahead, Howard.
The plan came in for zoning without a deck. The plan showed the deck. We built the deck. At the end, when they went through CO, the inspector saw that that little corner, four feet, went into that 20-foot setback. It's got 16 feet only on that corner. That one little piece on the side.
That's a line.
The plan showed the deck.
Right.
No.
Yes.
Built exactly the way the show.
Okay. Anyone in the public want to be heard on this application? Please stop up. Appeal number 4038, Mayor Sead.
I affirm. I'll make it fast.
Do you affirm to testify to the matter before the board?
I affirm. I just...
You're not... Name it every time, Mr. Flannery.
Yeah, Shloem McLean. Every attorney has their own requirement, so I'll conform with your requirements. I'll make it fast. I just want to understand how this happened, that somebody builds a deck. And how does that happen?
The plan, the permit, they did. The zoning permit was signed by me. It did not show the deck on the plaque. The architectural plan and the construction plan showed the deck. So it was approved with the deck. They built the deck. There's one little piece at the end.
So this didn't come to any boards?
No.
So it was just a byright application? They came in to you, you signed off on it, and then they somehow...
No. I looked at the construction plans. I only looked at the plaque.
You're not supposed to look at the construction plans?
Not, no.
No, so there is some way where these things could happen that somebody builds a deck and...
The only time it ever happened.
So this is a type of thing that there's no developer, did something wrong. You didn't do anything wrong. The building department didn't do anything wrong. So there's nothing what...
I looked at the construction plans. I don't know if I would have seen, because there's no setback on construction plans.
So why didn't you just sign off on it?
I signed off on the zoning with the plaque that did not show the deck.
Again. Thank you.
I don't think it's your position to interrogate Secretary of Zoning.
Okay, I'll re-ask the questions from Brian.
Okay. Anyone else in the public want to be heard? Seeing none?
None of them. No, Mr. Klein and the chair, just from the day.
I just said... Have you had a motion?
Not a chair, neither.
Motion by Judy Rubiath. Get him a second.
Second.
Second, Madam Yelly. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Gillen?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Mr. Vidia?
Yes.
Mr. Ingraham?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Resolutions. Can I have a resolution 4039, 54A? 3934A? 4024?
No, no.
4024.
24.
Resolution 3743? Resolution 4037? Resolution 4034? Anyone have any property resolutions?
4024 is the one where you wanted to see the driveway. And we do have options to show you. We have option A, we like. If you want to just say option A is good. Or if you want to see it.
Let's see it.
Water? Hurricane Irma? A member to the public?
No, no, no. It's mine.
Right. So... Do I have one? I don't think I do. Option A? Do you have Asian B? Yeah. Okay, so option A, this is the one coming out to James Street and we want it to be able to turn around. Option A, we made it 15 feet wide, the turnaround part, so two cars can pull in.
I didn't make turnaround wide. What are you showing me here?
Well, the fence is the next thing I want to talk about, but...
So what are you showing me over here?
I'm showing you over there in option A. And then, but next to variance plan, it either says option A or option B.
This plan.
Sorry. I'm looking at this.
And option A is the one that's more normal, that everybody does, that the neighbor next to it did. Option B provides that the stacked vehicles, they come back and turn around and come through the middle. And you're going to get a lot of fender benders and stuff on that. Option A is what we'd really like you to...
Which one is A? It's A or B?
Oh, the one, yeah, the one that...
This is what's next.
Yes. And option A is the same as the one next door, which that plan was part of it.
So does the resolution...
I...
Well, the resolution said the board was going to pick the driveway they liked.
Can you explain this to me? I see over here two driveway, two sets of driveways, line and line. Can you... Can you explain this to me? How does this work? A.
For each one, they have four stacked cars.
Four stacked cars, four stacked cars. And then they use this bottom over here 15 feet as a turnaround?
Yes.
And they bang into each other?
This car can back over here, the other one can back over here and go out. This one can do that.
And it's taking on the other side.
This is all the maneuver room for both.
And option B?
On option B, they push this house back a little further and puts another level in here.
To turn around.
Right, for turning around.[1562.72]